Not my style. Good evening, everyone. I am calling the May 5th City Council Meeting to Order. And as a reminder, we do continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. And it is proclamation month, so I warn you all to be patient as we go through some wonderful, wonderful groups in our community that we would like to acknowledge this evening. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you all to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Meaningful, meaningful words. So under Special Business this evening, we will start first with ID 1812 Economic Development Week Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes to the lectern. And Councilmember Ray will be doing the presentation. Welcome, Jen.
Come on.
Whereas, the International Economic Development Council created Economic Development Week to increase awareness of local programs and economic development professionals that create jobs, enhance career development opportunities, and improve the quality of life in communities across the globe. And whereas, Issaquah's economic development professionals promote economic well-being, high quality of life in Issaquah by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide stable tax base. And whereas, Issaquah's economic development professionals incumbent entrepreneurialism in order -- never give me big words like that.
I'm not going to let it down.
In order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, Issaquah's economic development professionals work in a wide variety of settings and topics across the community, including arts, culture, sustainability, transportation, redevelopment, public safety, human services, outdoor recreation, and others. And whereas, Issaquah's economic development professionals work collaboratively with city staff, community organizations, entrepreneurs, to implement the Economic Development Action Plan to increase access to opportunities, convene and catalyze and leverage Issaquah's assets. Therefore, Mary Lou Polly, the Mayor of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th to be Economic Development Week in the City of Issaquah. And we invite the community to join me, us, in thanking Issaquah's economic development staff for their service and outstanding contributions. And I think, since today is the 5th and we're not starting until the 11th, can we start Economic Development Week early?
Oh, two weeks.
Yeah.
A lot of words there.
Yes. It was almost going to take me till then to finish the proclamation. Anyway, Jen, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. So thank you, Councilmember Ray, and the rest of the council and mayor. I would just like to say that Economic Development Week isn't just about economic development professionals and staff. We work with lots of people within the city who we coordinate with, including Kelly Diane, who with the farmer's market, we just launched our homegrown retail program to help small home-based businesses get access to customers directly and test their branding, et cetera. We work with lots of organizations throughout the community to implement our economic development strategy. So this is for everybody.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Councilmember Ray. I'd love for -- one way to get a picture. Couldn't have said it better myself, Councilmember Ray.
That was a big four of words.
The next item on our agenda this evening is ID 1813, the Jewish American Heritage Month Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Rabbi Barry Ferkash from the Shabbat of Central Cascades to the lectern to join me. And his lovely wife. Welcome. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is celebrated every May to honor the significant contributions and rich history of Jewish Americans to the fabric of our nation. Whereas Jewish Americans have played a vital role in shaping the cultural, economic, scientific, and social landscape of the United States, contributing to the advancement of arts, education, business, medicine, and public service. And whereas, the Jewish community in Issaquah has been an integral part of our city's diverse and vibrant culture, bringing with them a deep commitment to family, faith, and community. And whereas, while antisemitism has been rising at an alarming rate in our country and our community, we must let it be known that antisemitism has no place in Issaquah, nor anywhere in the United States. And we must continue to create an environment that fosters mutual understanding of tolerance and respect for everyone. And whereas, the celebration of Jewish American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to reflect on the historical struggles and achievements of Jewish Americans and to celebrate the enduring spirit of the Jewish community in Issaquah and beyond, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of May 25th to be Jewish Heritage Month. And I'd like to invite the rabbi to share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. In the past 22 years, Issaquah has been our home, a very safe home, a home that we only knew a sense of community, love. The beautiful menorahs during Hanukkah that are lit on Front Street was initiated by Mayor of Issaquah Eva Freisinger. And ever since, every year, including last Hanukkah, Mayor Polly came and lit the menorah for us. And the Jewish community feels in this area, right here in Issaquah, as a wonderful embrace, especially in the last year and a half, since October 7th, lots of connections of love and support, knowing that we're going to be here for the rest of the future, knowing that our community will feel us, will continue keeping us safe in here. The Jewish community has contributed to the prosperity of the City of Issaquah. They've contributed to the education. Many of our members are teachers, educators in the Issaquah School District. And the influence of the Jewish community around this area has been instrumental and always, always positive. And knowing that this proclamation was just given gives us a boost of energy and support. And we would like to really extend the thanks in behalf of the entire Jewish community that we represent, and we hope to continue working together to make this place safe for Jews, Muslims, Christians, any other denomination, all mankind, under God. God bless you all. Thank you.
Can we do a picture, sir? Thank you so much for coming this evening. The next item under Special Business is ID 1831, Public Service Recognition Week Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Assistant to the City Administrator Dale Markey Krimp to the lectern with Deputy Council President De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. So whereas, the City of Issaquah's employees, elected and appointed officials, and volunteers are instrumental to making our community more sustainable, vibrant, connected, and safe. And whereas, by celebrating Public Service Recognition Week, a nationally celebrated event since 1985, we honor the public servants who serve the community and its residents, businesses, and visitors. And whereas, the Issaquah community receives service every day by public employees who serve in a variety of valuable roles, including administration, parks, and community services, community planning and development, public works, police, fire, municipal court, finance, executive administrative services, and whereas, the creativity and diversity of perspectives of our elected and appointed officials inform and advise the work of the city and are integral to the quality of service and life in our community. And whereas, the effectiveness and efficiency of government depends largely on public employees and volunteers who serve Issaquah community. And whereas, City of Issaquah public servants strive to provide excellent and timely customer service to the residents, businesses, and visitors in the City of Issaquah, and City of Issaquah employees, elected and appointed officials, and volunteers work every day to make our community more sustainable, vibrant, connected, and safe. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Mary Lou Polly, do hereby proclaim May 4th to 10th to be Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Issaquah. And we invite the community to join in thanking public servants, employees, elected and appointed officials, and volunteers for their service and outstanding contributions in witness whereof. Mayor Polly has hereunto set her hand and seal of the City of Issaquah on the 5th day of May 2025. And we have so many employees who are exemplars of public service, and we do thank all of them. And Dale, you're really an important and exemplary symbol of that public service. So I'm very happy to present this to you. And would you like to say a few words? There you go.
As Councilmember De Michelle just pointed out, there are many other people in the room tonight that could be standing up here to accept this. And in fact, I was a late sub. But I would like to, on behalf of our entire employee population, accept this proclamation. It's an incredibly meaningful acknowledgement of the hard work, the dedication, the professionalism of our staff, and the effort they bring every single day to the work that they do. Public service is a calling, one that demands compassion, integrity, and a steadfast commitment to community. Our team here at the city serve, as you just pointed out, in a wide range of roles, often behind the scenes, ensuring that essential services are delivered efficiently, that our neighborhoods remain safe and welcoming, and that Issaquah continues to thrive as a place where people want to live, work, and visit. I'd also like to recognize you, members of the City Council, for your service. You are also public servants, and this week also should acknowledge the service that you have dedicated here to the city. Your support and collaboration is what makes the work that we do possible. So on behalf of my colleagues, I'd like to appreciate this proclamation. Thank you for affirming the work that our staff does. It encourages all of us to continue striving for excellence on behalf of the City of Issaquah. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Deputy Council President.
Thank you, Dale. The next proclamation this evening is ID 1832, Professional Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation. I'd like to invite our City Clerk, Tisha Geezer, to the lecture. And Tisha, do you know if Chris is joining us remotely? We also have our deputy with us remotely, Chris Grabowski. So welcome to you both. Presented by Councilmember Jiang.
Great. Whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest profession amongst public servants. And it is Public Servant Week. Whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the profession through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments and contributions of the professionals who serve in Issaquah's City Clerk's Office. Now therefore, I, Councilmember Kelly Jiang, on behalf of Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do you recognize the week of May 4th through 10th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Issaquah? And I invite the community to join me in thanking the City Clerk's Office for their service and outstanding contributions. And I'll hand it over to Tisha to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember. So Chris is joining us virtually. Chris got his Certified Municipal Clerk certification just a few weeks ago, which means all three of those of us in the clerk's office are now Certified Municipal Clerks, which we're very proud of. And we take a lot of pride in our work, supporting our public meetings, taking care of the city's records, and responding to public disclosure. We really do a lot to help ensure access to government and transparency in government in our jobs. And I think I speak for Chris Tammy and our part-time Records Assistant, Amanda, when I say that we consider it an honor to be doing this work for the City of Issaquah. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the words that you used. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, City Clerk. And thanks for joining us, Chris, and congratulations on your upcoming retirement this year. We're going to miss you. The next item under Special Business is ID 1833, Drinking Water Proclamation Week. And I'd like to invite Public Works Director Emily Moon to the lectern. This proclamation is really important to me. I'm a public works director giving it to a public works director. So I have spent many, many years, both professionally and personally, on this topic, on this issue, because safe drinking water is one of the best things that we do for this community. And I'm so proud of the work that our public works team does to make sure this is who we are. Whereas, for more than 40 years, the American Water Works Association and its members have used Drinking Water Week as a unique opportunity for both water professionals and the communities and the communities they serve to recognize the vital role water plays in our daily lives. And whereas, water is the most valuable natural resource, and drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene. And whereas, tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support for our economy. And whereas, the hard work performed by the entire water sector is vital to maintaining and protecting this essential resource. And Issaquah's Public Works Department staff and operators work to ensure the safety and quality of drinking water and maintain the infrastructure we all rely on. And whereas, we're all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend on. And whereas, the Issaquah community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution and to practice water conservation, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, the Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th to 10th to be Drinking Water Week. And I would love to give Director Moon an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you very much for this proclamation. It is important to our staff. We have folks that work both on the engineering side of the house and operations side of the house in engineering. We have engineers that are, of course, responsible for the design, the construction, and bigger maintenance projects of our infrastructure. We also have environmental science folks who work to make sure that we are doing all we can to protect our aquifer and the sources of water for our wells, and work with our business community and our residents to make sure that our practices are also in lockstep with those objectives. And then on operations side, we have a fantastic team of water quality technicians who are daily at work analyzing our water and making sure that we have clean, safe drinking water. And we also have a whole bunch of operations, maintenance, facility folks who take care of our infrastructure and make sure that delivery is efficient and effective. So I want to say thank you very much for supporting our team and supporting safe, clean drinking water in Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. The next one I have is Corrections Officer.
Oh, you were right.
Okay. ID 1834, Corrections Officers Week Proclamation. I have an additional person coming up as well. And I'd like to invite Police Commander Casey Allred to the lectern. And Casey, did you bring anyone else with you this evening?
Sergeant Shergill here.
Come on up.
So this is quite appropriate that I'm reading this proclamation. I have spent some time in the jail. As your municipal court judge in prior years, we would have first appearances down the jail. So defendants would come in, and we'd make sure that they knew all their rights and were, had a good opportunity to get bail and other opportunities for due process along the way. So this proclamation has some deep meaning for me, so I'm very honored to be reading it tonight. Whereas the City of Issaquah dedicated correction officers as essential to our justice system. And whereas, much is expected from the men and women who every day supervise offenders in correctional facilities and without whose daily hard work and sacrifices we could not operate. And whereas, corrections officers are skilled professionals who must act as counselors, communicators, educators, and experts at crisis intervention and must protect our safety while maintaining their professional demeanor, often in a challenging environment. And whereas, corrections officers must possess the intuitive sense to resolve conflict and support restorative activities while housing offenders in a humane environment, often to the risk of their own well-being. And whereas, all are committed to a common goal, the secure, safe, and humane operation of our jail facility, where employees work to reduce future crime and change individuals' criminal behavior. Now therefore, Mayor Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th to be Corrections Officers Week in the City of Issaquah. And we all invite the community to join us in thanking the city's corrections officers for their service and outstanding contributions.
I appreciate your service in the jail, but I'm serving 20 to life, so it's all right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council and community. Good evening. On behalf of the dedicated men and women working in our correctional facility, I'm honored and humbled to accept this proclamation in recognition of National Corrections Officers Employees Week. This week serves as an opportunity to pause and recognize those who work behind the scenes of public safety, often unnoticed. Correctional staff face unique challenges daily operating environments and demand vigilance, professionalism, and compassion. Our mission is simple but profound, to protect the public by operating safe, secure, humane correctional facilities, and to provide rehabilitation opportunities that support successful reintegration into society. It is a mission we fulfill not just through policy and procedure, but through character. It is our values that give life to that mission, and we strive for those values every day. We start with service. We serve our communities with humility, and we serve those in our custody with a commitment to fairness, dignity, and opportunity for change. We hold ourselves to accountability, to one another, to those we supervise, and to the public we protect. In a field where integrity is tested daily, we take ownership of our actions and uphold the highest standards. This accountability is essential in our line of work. We must evaluate situations fairly, make decisions without bias, and ensure that our actions are guided by truth, not emotion or assumption. We show leadership, not just through our rank or title, but through example. Every correctional employee, whether doing a security check, leading a team, providing healthcare, or teaching and coaching or mentoring, has the power to lead by doing what is right, even when it's hard. We strive to do the job well, to build trust through performance, and improve ourselves and our systems every day. And finally, we practice treating every individual, no matter their past or circumstance, by being firm and fair, with equal respect and dignity. This proclamation is a sincere acknowledgement that our communities see us, value us, and support us. To the leadership of the City of Issaquah, thank you for recognizing Corrections Week and affirming your support for the professionals in one of the most challenging environments imaginable. And to my fellow correctional professionals at home or working tonight, thank you for your commitment to the mission, your embodiment of the salmon values, and your tireless efforts to make our facility safer for uniformed staff and those we serve. Thank you.
Would you hold this while we get the picture?
Thank you both for coming, and thank you, Councilmember Joe. Next, we are moving on to ID 1835, Water Safety Month Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Aquatics Recreation Supervisor Zach listen to the lectern. And Councilmember Hall.
All right. Come on up, Zach. Well, this one's very special because we're both Zacks, and it's hard to find other Zacks. And then also grew up here in Issaquah and learned to swim here at the Julius Bohm Pool myself. So this one's very special. So whereas, National Water Safety Month is celebrated annually through the efforts of several key organizations, including the American Red Cross and the National Recreation and Park Association. And whereas, the City of Issaquah is committed to promoting healthy lifestyles and providing opportunities for community members to engage in safe and enjoyable recreation activities while actively working to create a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive community. And whereas, swimming and aquatic-related activities play a vital role in improving the physical and mental health and enhancing the quality of life for peoples of all ages, abilities, races, ethnicities, genders, sexual orientations, and socioeconomic background. And whereas, the Julius Bohm Pool and aquatic programs offered by the City of Issaquah provide a valuable resource for our community. And whereas, the Parks and Community Services Aquatics Team support a variety of programming, swim lessons, drop-in activities, LAP and public swim, facility rentals, lifeguard and CPR classes, and other special activities. And whereas, the city's well-trained staff who deliver these programs are essential to the promotion of water safety by providing aquatic activities in a safe, and responsible, and inclusive manner that respects the dignity and worth of all individuals. So now therefore I, Zach Hall, on behalf of Mary Lou Polly, the Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of May to be Water Safety Month in the City of Issaquah. And we invite you all to join us in thanking Issaquah's aquatic staff for their service and outstanding contributions to this community. So thanks, Zach, and everyone else who does that. Would you like to say anything?
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the 60-plus hard-working lifeguards and swim instructors at the pool who do this work every day. Thank you so much for the recognition.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Councilmember Hall. The next item on our agenda this evening is ID 1837, Affordable Housing Week Proclamation. I'd like to invite Sophie Glass, Government Affairs Policy and Communications Manager of a Regional Coalition for Housing, otherwise called ARCH, to the lectern to join our Council President.
Thank you. And this is an area where we are very glad to have a member of ARCH here. For those who don't know, ARCH is our regional affordable housing group. And so it provides us an opportunity to not just fund projects in Issaquah, but around the region and kind of collaborate on the east side. So whereas, all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, defines affordable housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas, the Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% of area median income. And whereas, studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas, the CDC recognizes safe, healthy, and affordable housing within communities of opportunity as key social determinants of health. And whereas, everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in those properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas, united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim May 12th to 16th to be Affordable Housing Week in the City of Issaquah. The City of Issaquah endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and that all people in it live with dignity and safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Would you like to make comments?
I think you said it really well, so I'll just add a few more remarks here. So Issaquah joined ARCH in 1996 and has been a very important member of the coalition ever since. Together with -- Together with 15 King County cities and the county itself, Issaquah works with its partners to build more affordable housing faster. So this unique regional coalition has pooled its resources and funded 11 affordable housing projects right here in Issaquah, some of them rentals, some of them for homeownership. In addition, ARCH has helped Issaquah create some really great local policies and development agreements to further affordable housing in your community. And there’s more progress underway. I hear on your agenda later tonight, there’s going to be discussion about the Trailhead Transit Oriented Development Project, which is very exciting, and then ARCH is wrapping up securing some affordable homeownership opportunities at Tibbetts Crossing. So there’s a lot of great work happening here at Issaquah, but we know that the crisis we’re in around affordable housing is great. ARCH’s mailing list, where people express interest in getting an affordable unit, is 11,000 people, and it grows by the day. And here in Issaquah, 1 in 4 residents are cost-burdened. So this affordable crisis is regional and demands a regional response, and ARCH is just really grateful to work with Issaquah, your community, your developers, your elected officials here, to really kind of move the needle on affordable housing in East King County, and we’re really grateful to be here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Thank you, Council President. So in case you haven’t been counting, we have two more to go. We’re at number 12. ID 1838 is Police Week Proclamation, and I’d like to invite Police Commander Travis Neese, Officer Burdisse, Ann Warner, and anyone else that is still here, because there are many people with us tonight. Come on up, and this one is going to be presented by Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Issaquah play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community members, and whereas it is important for Issaquah residents to know and understand the duties and responsibilities of our police department, as well as the problems they face in the line of duty, and whereas that all members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas the Issaquah Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim the week of May 11th to 18th to be Police Week in the city of Issaquah, and invites the community to join us in thanking the Issaquah Police Department for their outstanding service and contributions to the Issaquah community. In witness whereof, she set her hand and seal of the city of Issaquah this 5th day of May 2025. Commander, do you wish to say a couple words?
Thank you, Councilmembers, Madam Mayor. To piggyback a little bit on what Commander Allard had said, we are all one big law enforcement community, whether the corrections or law enforcement. Police Week is for honoring those officers who made the ultimate sacrifice and to honor those who serve our community each and every day. Our current 38 sworn officers and our civilian staff, all of our community, are grateful for the opportunity to serve the city of Issaquah and appreciate the council’s recognition of Police Week as we continue to provide exceptional service to our community. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you all. Bigger group as well, would you like to come and do the picture in front of the dais, Councilmember Marts?
Absolutely.
Maybe that would be fun.
Great.
Get all the council in. Thank you so much. Do you want to go down? Up? Okay, down. Okay? Go down. and Tourism Week Proclamation, and I’d like to invite Executive Director Kristi Gerard and staff from Issaquah to the lectern. Whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of Issaquah’s economy, development, and workforce, and whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country, with an economic output of $2.9 trillion, supporting 15 million American jobs, and whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Issaquah and across the state by generating $3.3 billion in state and local tax revenue to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more, and whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that move our economy, our nation, and Issaquah forward, and whereas the travel industry cannot recover without the full return of leisure, business, and international inbound travelers, increasing travel to and within the United States drives America forward to a more prosperous future, and whereas the travel industry’s success will grow Issaquah’s economy and workforce, since prior to the pandemic, small businesses have accounted for 60% of leisure and hospitality employment, and whereas travel is an essential industry and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, and fosters mutual understanding. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 4th to 10th to be Travel and Tourism Week, and I’d like to offer Kristi a moment at the mic.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, honorable councilmembers, city staff leadership, and community members. On behalf of our hospitality and visitor experience, small businesses, it’s an honor to be before you and accept this proclamation on their behalf. I’m very proud of this emerging part of our economic growth, and just thank you again.
Let’s take a picture together. Thus ends Proclamation Extravaganza for the mayor and her seven stand-ins. Well done. This is the month of May. This is what May is like. Very grateful for all of those we got to recognize today. We’ve come to that time in our meeting, which is Audience Comments, and members of the public may address the council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you’re joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you’re in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments this evening?
Yes.
Thanks. So if you’re making comments, you’re invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah’s programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while it’s not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. So if you are online when you are recognized, please unmute your microphone. If you’re in the room, please step up to the lectern in the center of the room and press the button to get the red light. State your name and address or relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you’re attending virtually and you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if you lose your connection, the meeting will still need to proceed, and we encourage you to rejoin. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect to the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank all of you for taking time to address us this evening. City Clerk, who’s the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Kai Han.
Kai Han, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you, mayors, and thank you, council offices. I really appreciate your time to speak to me. I feel very better. I talked to police commanders, and then right after this meeting, I went to police officers. So I talked to him directly. So this matter is, I was here last week, you have a video meeting about emergency budget, and some councilor said looking for some volunteers, some councilor said maybe we’re raising taxes, some councilor says FEMA. My background is a business background. I developed this side. I’ve been working with the city numerous times. I worked with the county, I worked with the state, I worked with the federal government. If you need my background, I will volunteer. So she got my information, I’m willing to support this community, because I’m a resident here over 10 years. I was in the local Renton Technical College. Issaquah has always high standard. If you need my background experiences, I will volunteer my time and the energy to make system work better. And I look at the one more times, because you have a budget for the police officer, cameras, camera extremely well. They ask for $35,000, and she asking how many camera unit, they don’t have answer. But I know who pay for the camera. Anytime it’s cost accounting, what driving cost, that person is pay, me or the other guy. I will swear, if I break the law, I will give $2 million for this community, plus last time of my time in jail. And I talked to the police commanders, and I told him, please charge him. If you charge that person, that person is using police as a personal bodyguard. Issaquah police never going to be one person’s personal guard. Police officers run by the public funding. Public funding means everybody has an equal opportunity to use the public, not my own private guard. So I will very clear who pay for the camera, and I will make sure he gonna charge it. And I talked to the prosecutors, and then I told him, I looked at all the videotape. They have four different statement. One is police statement, police said I touch him so hard so he can open the window, and the coastal manager said no physical contact. One said I touching his hand, the other said touch my arm. I’m a snowboard instructor. I’m very aware about, I’m a martial art guy, I’m a military guy, I’m a soldier to scholars. I’m never touch anybody. Anybody is lying to the police in written, in America, that crime. Whoever crime, subject to justice. So I thank you for the councilors and thank for the meeting, and I go to the police department, and tomorrow I have a meeting, I gonna do same thing. Police prosecutors, please do not intimidate or insulting old Asian man. Because prosecutors say that I pay $150 fine, plus 10 hours anger management, and then some volunteer time. Not the money, anger management. Anybody raised by, if you got a handicap in the public place, 15 minutes without your fall, and you got criminal charging. Anybody smiling? No, everybody angry. No, I’m innocent, I’m innocent. Am I anger management problem? No, I’m raising ticket very nicely. My background is very clear. I went to the Renton Technical College, I went to City University, I worked at the University of Washington, I built up this property. I’m angry because system apply inequality. First time I talked to the police department many time, charge him, charge him, they never listen to me. And I come here, I talk to the mayor, and they all is this different distribution. I told the council, we say no, it’s I can do. Finally, somebody hear my voices. So I’m going to the police department. Thank you very much. Tomorrow I go to trial, tell same things. If prosecutor has evidence, put me in jail. I pay $2 million deposit. I’m clear, I swear God. Bible says so. Do not lie to the judge, do not lie to the public. Lying is big problem. Emergency has a modern nature and human factors. Human factor is big problem. Modern nature, storming, flowing, winding, electric structure, emergency come from not one direction, all different complete direction. I know I’ve been in business 10 years, I built this park. So if you need my background, or I’m an accountant, I’m happy to support the city, and then my time is out. Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening?
We do have a few members of the public with us virtually, but I’m not seeing that any of them are wishing to speak at this time.
Would anyone joining here in us in chambers today like to speak? Not seeing any indication. Well, I want to thank our commentator tonight, talking about council conversations, volunteering operations, and police court operations, and just want everybody to know that you can always submit your comments, written comments, at any time to your city council by using the citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov email address. We’re going to move on to the consent calendar. I do not have any remarks on the consent calendar, but I’d like to know if any of the committee chairs would like to report on any of the calendar items. I am not seeing an indication, so. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payrolls been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I’m not seeing an indication. Is there a motion? Council President.
I move we approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second?
Thank you. It’s been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries 7-0 unanimously. We’re going to move into our regular business. This evening, we will be having a couple of informational presentations and one action item. The first item is ID 1878, Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center Housing Cooperation Agreement. Andrea, that’s a mouthful. The council will be asked to make a recommendation this evening. Before inviting the presenters up, I’d like to clarify that this item and the next agenda item, Social and Community Connection Initiatives, are not before the city council for action tonight. Instead, feedback is requested on a few policy questions, and normally, we would take these agenda items to a committee of the whole meeting for feedback. However, due to the timing, your input is requested at tonight’s regular council meeting instead. Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder is going to introduce the item. Welcome, Andrea.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, council. I’m Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. With me is Dan Landis from the King County Housing Authority. He’ll be presenting on the project in a little bit. Also, I’d like to thank the staff who are on the line with us, who have made themselves available this evening to answer questions. We have a number of planning staff, including our Community Planning and Development Director, Minnie Dollywell, as well with us. So thank you for having us. Tonight, we have, we want to talk to you about the Housing Cooperative Agreement. Let me, there we go. The purpose, as the mayor said, is to introduce to you what this concept is, the Housing Cooperative Agreement, and receive any feedback that council may have on this agreement or any changes that you’d like to make. And we’re not asking for adoption at this time, pending council’s feedback. We would be asking for adoption at a subsequent city council meeting in June. So a Housing Cooperation Agreement is something that is enabled by its own RCW, the Housing Cooperation Law, and it serves as an agreement between a local government and a housing authority. So it’s very limited and tailored into who can enter into this agreement. In that way, it’s unlike a development agreement that has its own enabling legislation. This can only occur between a city like ours and a housing authority. So it’s very tailored in that way. It must be approved by the governing bodies of the local jurisdiction and the housing authority, and HCA has recently entered into something similar, a Housing Cooperative Agreement, with the city of Black Diamond. So again, the direction needed for you tonight is, does the council agree with the administration’s recommendation to approve the HCA, and are there any changes that council would like to make to this draft of the HCA? And Dan is going to go over a lot more in terms of a little bit of history of the project, the specific aspects of the HCA that we’re bringing for you tonight, and happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I’m Dan Landis, Vice President of Development for King County Housing Authority. It’s good to come back to you and report on our transit-oriented development collaboration, and to seek your further assistance on this project in the form of a and to seek your further assistance on this project in the form of a housing cooperation agreement and hopefully provide you with a tangible way of celebrating Affordable Housing Week. Before diving into this proposed agreement, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the history of this project. We started working on this when we submitted a proposal to the city of Issaquah in 2016. Just for reference, Barack Obama was president in 2016 and Fred Butler was the mayor of Issaquah. The song Closer by The Chainsmokers was at the top of the charts. Remember that? Cause I don't. Anyway, KCHA partnered with Spectrum Development Solutions to submit a proposal that featured all of the things that you can see on the slide and including 124 units of affordable housing, which increased to 155 units subsequent to that, and 200 units of market rate housing. The site for the TOD project was at that time owned by CenturyLink, now called Lumen, and we assumed the acquisition cost would be $3 million. Through many years of difficult negotiations and twists and turns and the loss of our market rate partner, we finally were able to acquire the site in 2022, but at a cost over five times higher than what we had originally hoped. Many other things have changed since 2016, including construction costs increasing by 86%, higher borrowing rates on the bond market, and lower tax credit pricing. The development capacity of the site has also changed. What, um, this slide shows what we originally thought we were buying, which was the site as described in the deed's legal description and also how the site was developed. However, in this process, we learned that a short plaid had been recorded in 1980 that used a different legal description. This slide shows you the difference. To avoid a protracted title dispute and facilitate a faster sale, Lumen quitclaimed the eastern 30 feet of this parcel to the neighboring property owner, which shifted the site boundaries 30 feet to the west, replacing what had been developable land with a wetland. The 2023 Land Use Code amendments that were passed by the city also impacted the development capacity of the site. This image shows the allowable wetland buffer and setback before the change. This shows the wetland buffer now required after the code amendments with the difference highlighted in the bright red. The combined impact of the changes to the legal description and the increased wetland buffer dropped the maximum development width from 228 feet to 178 feet, so a 28% reduction. There were also some additional impacts of the Issaquah code amendments, which I wanna quickly go over. One of them was the code, the new code eliminated discretion in addressing the required step back above the fifth floor. Our construction team estimates that the cost, the added structural costs of doing a step back in the middle of the wood frame construction would cost 1.2 million dollars and we would lose six units total and have to replace 12 three-bedroom family-sized apartments with smaller units above the step back. The ability to mix and match private and community amenities spaces was also eliminated by the code changes, which require that 48 square feet of private outdoor space per unit would be provided. And having to do all of that, all of that private amenity space would add costs as adding balconies is really the only affordable way of doing that, but even that adds costs. So where are we now? The current TOD development, with the help of the waivers that have been identified in the housing cooperation agreement, this is what we can do. 154 units of low-income housing tax credit housing, again 40 and, or still 40 and 60% of area median income. Approximately 200 market rate housing units. We have not yet identified the developer for that, but we'll be doing so soon. 3,600 square feet to provide housing for six individuals with developmental disabilities that will be owned by Leo and a 10,000 square foot opportunity center that will be owned by the city of Issaquah and continuing to have a public plaza and a mid-block crossing. This is the timeline that we're on right now. So you can see we acquired in 2022. We began our design in July of 2024. The cell tower finally was removed from the site in February this year. We submitted our site development permit application shortly thereafter. We'll be, we anticipate submitting our building permit application in August and starting construction in June of 2026 and finishing up in, in June of 2028. So now we would like to go into the details of what we're asking in the housing cooperation agreement and for this, I'm going to invite our architect, Maggie Carson from Weber Thompson to, to lead this discussion. So Maggie?
Sure. Thanks, Dan, and thanks everybody for meeting tonight to talk through this. Next slide. Below are the five requests under consideration as part of the housing cooperation agreement. Some apply strictly to the affordable building while others apply to both buildings. We wanna walk through each of them so that it's clear what we're asking for and what the benefit is. I should also add that none of the requests decrease or adjust the wetland buffers and it's partly because we are respecting the new wetland requirements that the requests of the HCA are so important. Next slide. To kick us off, the code requires buildings over five stories tall to step back at least five feet above the fifth floor. We are requesting that the affordable building not need to comply with this because of cost, constructibility, quantity and quality impact. The market rate building will incur the same challenges but would, and would benefit from a deviation on this as well, but tonight's proposal is just for the affordable building where the exemption is really imperative for maintaining project viability. Next slide. The diagram at the top shows building code required construction types with three levels of concrete and steel construction at the base of the building and five levels of wood construction above. Issaquah's step back code requires a step back to occur within the wood structure of the building, which creates a problem. Wood construction relies on stacking walls to support the building. When you change the perimeter and interior of the building within the wood structure, these changes need to be accommodated by additional beams and transitions, all of which add cost to the building. The diagram at the bottom shows a segment of a typical affordable housing plan. The apartments are designed to be efficient and compact. That red stripe along the side shows what you lose with the five-foot step back. The loss of space renders the apartments unusable. To handle this, the building either needs to oversize apartments below, which adds superfluous space and cost, or dramatically reconfigure the upper floors with less units, which worsens structural plumbing and other systematic challenges which rely on stacking to be cost effective. Next slide. These are wall sections illustrating the step back condition. On the left is the code required step back. In that section, the building is eight stories tall and the bulk of the massing looms a full five stories above the sidewalk. The right two sections illustrate posed condition for the affordable building. In many locations, the building still provides a five-foot step back, but does so at the transition between concrete and wood construction, which alleviates the structural complications. Providing the step back lower on the building also brings the bulk of the massing down to pedestrian scale and increases solar access, improving the pedestrian experience. In limited locations, primarily on the south facade, the affordable building is co-planar without a step back and that's what you see in that far right section. This condition has an express datum that enhances the appearance. When located on the south facade, the co-planar relationship does not block additional sunlight since it's coming from a different angle. Next slide. And finally, here are renderings showing the visual impact of the step back. The left images illustrate a code compliant design while the right shows our current proposed design. And I'll point out that the proposed design includes an express datum at the top floor and while there's not a step back in that location, it does help to fulfill the visual intent of the code. Next slide. I wanna talk about the second and third request of the HCA together because they're, they're very closely related. Issaquah's code requires parking be separated from certain public spaces like streetscapes by 20 feet of residential or commercial use. On this project, all four sides of both buildings front public areas with this requirement. The facade about Maple and Newport Way, the New Core Street, the required through block passage, or the public plaza. As such, the code requires parking to be separated from the building frontage on all four sides. We are requesting a portion of the facade be excused from this requirement. Next slide. On a related note, Issaquah's code requires 40% transparency on the same types of frontages, which again, in this development applies to all the sides of both buildings. To meet the code, the buildings would need to provide transparency into trash rooms, loading areas and similar utilities, or bury those spaces within the center of the building. We are requesting some frontages be excused from the 40% transparency requirement. Next slide. Below is the first floor plan of the affordable building. In any building, some uses just require vehicular access. For example, you must have a way for cars to enter your parking garage. There must be a way for trash to be picked up. There must be clear and easy access to your transformer vault. Also, it's critical to provide an interior circulation loop for cars to connect to upper levels of parking. You can see in the plan below that even with one side of that circulation loop dedicated exclusively to compact stalls, the parking can't be separated from frontages by 20 feet of other uses on all sides. In the proposed design, we've prioritized more engaging uses for places with heavy pedestrian activity and tucked the less exciting, albeit necessary, uses to isolated places. Maple Street, which is to the left, is a well-established street within Issaquah and the proposed design responds by fronting it with the main lobby and opportunity center. The west frontage along the bottom of the screen fronts the new through block connection. This passage links pedestrians and cyclists from Maple to the crosswalk at Tibbetts Park and is likely to be highly used. The proposed design lines this with residential uses, apartments and amenities spaces. The amenities space at the southwest corner wraps onto the south facade where it can engage the communal plaza. That's the right side of the screen. We have focused the necessary utility features in the southeast corner of the building away from the main entries and primary pedestrian activity. The design plans for landscaping and art against the waste and loading rooms to enhance the plaza. We are asking for leniency with transparency on the south and east facades. Next slide. The market rate building encounters the same challenges and handles them with the same strategy. The market rate program does not include the large opportunity center, which creates a more efficient parking layout, which is good because more parking is required for this building. The increase in parking results in more frontage for parking along the New Core Street, but we are able to provide transparency into the parking with decorative screens that add to the streetscape. Again, residential and active uses are prioritized along the established street frontage, in this case Newport Way, which is on the right, along the through block passage connecting to Tibbetts Park at the bottom and fronting the plaza, which is to the left. Here, we are asking for leniency with the transparency on the north and east facades. Next slide. The fourth request in the HCA revolves around types of residential amenities space. Issaquah's code requires 100 square feet of shared outdoor amenities space for each apartment and also 48 square feet of private outdoor amenities space for each apartment. It's the privatization, not the amount of area, that creates the challenge. Essentially, the code requires every apartment to have a balcony or deck. Providing a deck on every apartment is way beyond market demand, even for high-end apartments, and they also come at a cost premium. We are requesting that the affordable building be allowed to provide outdoor amenities space at a rate of 148 square feet per apartment with the flexibility for that to either be private or common area or a mix of both, to avoid the costs and wall penetrations required for installing decks at every apartment. Next slide. These diagrams and calculations on the screen are, for our proposed design, show that there is more than enough area at grade and in the, at grade and in the fourth floor courtyards to meet 148 square feet per apartment. These spaces are designed to foster community within each building and also collectively onsite. They meet the requirements for shared amenities spaces and create an enjoyable gathering space for residents. Oftentimes in affordable buildings, because apartments house larger families, private decks are used for storage for things like strikes and sports gear and beach chairs rather than enjoyed as an amenity. Next slide. Our last request, Issaquah's code requires that the project be certified LEED Platinum. The affordable building will also be required to meet ESDS just to receive funding. ESDS, or Evergreen Sustainable Development Standards, was created by Washington State to ensure all publicly funded housing is sustainable. It is based on the nationally recognized green community standards with modifications to reflect Washington State's sustainability priorities and building codes. ESDS contains criteria that safeguard health and safety, increase durability, promote sustainable living, preserve the environment and, and increase energy and water efficiency. Requiring the affordable building to be certified under both programs adds cost without adding value. We are requesting the affordable building be allowed to substitute ESDS in place of LEED Platinum. Next slide. And that concludes my walkthrough of the items we're asking for. Thank you again for your time and thoughtful consideration on these requests. We're really excited about this project and what it has to offer and all that it can be. And with that, I'm gonna pass it back to Andrea to talk through next steps. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to provide the note that the administration has worked hard with KCHA on bringing forward these requests. There's been a lot of negotiations of some of the things that we've been talking through this evening and we really wanted to prioritize waiving of requirements in support of the affordable housing, building especially, and also trying to be flexible as we have new standards now and some of this, this project is pointing out that some of these standards are hard, are hard to make happen when we talk about transparency requirement in certain site situations. So we've really looked at all of these requests and have negotiated on a number of these points and so happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did you wanna walk through the next steps and then go to questions?
I certainly can if you prefer me to do that.
I think it's fine. I think good. Do you want that, the next steps first? Okay, go ahead.
Great. Okay, so one of the reasons for the timing of this request for the HCA is because it's tied to the site development permit. So they have applied for their site development permit before they're able to be issued that permit. The staff need to understand where council sits on a number of these items. So before that they can apply for their building permit, we need to settle these items. Are some of these requirements waived? Are some of them not? What does that look like? So that's one of the key points and timing of the HCA with what you see on the timeline tonight for the site development permit. In, so this is a little incorrectly labeled. We're here for you tonight not for a decision on the HCA, but rather your feedback and guidance. We would be coming back in June for any potential adoption pending your comments tonight. Then looking at the site development permit issuance, hopefully in October of this year, building permit still would be happening in August. And then construction would be occurring June of 2026 and with the opportunity center up and operational hopefully in 2028. So again, the policy questions before you this evening are, are there changes that you would like to make to the HCA? And do you agree with the council recommendation to approve the HCA?
And Andrea, if I could get you to just add a little bit more information, a conversation that I had with you and staff about the lessons that we are learning from these negotiations and how having a project partner test drive our code has been very... and how having a project partner test drive our code has been very helpful.
Yes, yes. I think one of the examples, and I don't know that I know all the diagrams here, to flip back to the most helpful one, this one will do, I think, is looking at the transparency requirement, I think, is a great example. So, when we think about redevelopment in the central Issaquah area, a lot of that redevelopment is going to happen on maybe a larger scale that might take up a whole block. And so, when you have a building that has fronts on three sides, and then the other side is a wetland, basically, but also a main passageway for pedestrian traffic, it's really hard to meet those transparency requirements and also meet utility requirements, access, loading, moving vans, all that kind of stuff at the same time. And so, you know, as they were saying, it's difficult to provide that transparency. There's some things that they can do, some things that they plan to do. And as we look at that and our codes into the future, that's one of the things I think we want to continue looking at. Another thing that's before, I believe it's PPC coming up soon, is looking at the idea of public space and the public or the community space requirements. So, where Maggie had talked about having the balcony requirement for every unit, thinking about, are there different ways to meet that outdoor space requirement? In this case, it's a plaza, but what are the other ways so that it can be flexible and something that is supportive, especially in this case with the HCA, of affordable housing?
Fantastic. Thank you. I think it was Councilmember Martz, followed by Councilmember Hall?
Thanks.
Oh, Councilmember Joe after, sorry. Oh, Jang.
Thanks. Before we get to the HCA, I have a couple of questions around the general update. When did Spectrum leave this project?
Spectrum left this project, I want to say, in 2020, and that was primarily because the person that, from Spectrum, that had been working with us, Hal Ferris, left Spectrum himself, and the remaining partners felt like it had been going on too long and they didn't see a finish line, and so they didn't want to continue.
Okay. So, I saw in your presentation that you don't currently have a partner for the market rate side. So, that's a five-year running problem. Talk to me about how you bifurcate this project, given it sounds like you're pretty much ready to go on the workforce housing side of it, but you don't have a partner on the market rate. How do we, how is it, for permitting and for everything, how do you move forward?
So, this site is one parcel. It's not divided. And so, we have to have a design for both buildings to proceed with a site development permit. And so, that's what we're doing. We have a design that works. We have talked with market rate developers, and they prefer 200-plus units in their development. So, we made sure to save enough development capacity for that building to have a marketable product. Part of the, some of, we wanted to see how we could get through this process and what sort of benefits that we could offer to the market rate developer, for example, the transparency benefit, and taking some of the site development challenges off their plate and hopefully be able to benefit from that. We're into this for quite a bit of money, and we really want to sell the market rate site and recoup as much of that money as we can. And so, we wanted to wait and see what kind of work we could do for them before bringing them onboard. They may choose to redesign the building within the parameters of our site development approval, but our architects are very familiar with market rate development, so they tried to design with that in mind.
So, is the plan to make a build permit submission even if you don't have a market rate partner? Because that's in three months, right?
A building permit submission, yes. We plan on moving forward. Our goal is to get a partner on, but not at any price. And so, if we cannot find, if the market just isn't there right now to find a partner, then we're willing to incur the holding costs and proceed with the work that we need to do for our property. But we will continue to be seeking partners until we find one.
But you said it's all one property?
It's all one property. The goal is to divide it by condominium, so there will be a two-unit condominium, one of which is to be sold to the market rate and the other for the affordable.
All right. I may have questions later about HCA, depending on what other questions could ask others. Thank you.
Councilmember Jang.
Great. Okay, I have a lot of questions, so bear with me. So, first off, I saw the price tag, so 73.5 million construction costs. Is that just for the affordable building or is it for both affordable and market rate buildings?
Just the affordable building.
Okay. That's quite an eye-popping number. I have a lot of questions about the financing, so I'm assuming this is a 4% light tech project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, there's, you know, with the bonding capacity, whatever, so is King County Housing Authority issuing the bonds, and is there going to be any issue with that being over, like the state bond cap at all?
No. So, we will be, I mean, yes, we will be, King County Housing Authority will be issuing the bonds, and all of the public housing authorities and the Washington State Housing Finance Commission meet quarterly to make sure that housing authorities have the bond cap that they need to complete their projects. So, this project has actually been on that list for a number of years, and we have a pretty firm reservation for getting the bond cap we need next year.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, so, another question, so on the piece about the green building certification, so the staff analysis said that the ESDS, which is similar to, it's basically like Washington State's version of the Enterprise Green Communities certification. So, the staff analysis said it's analogous to LEED Silver, which just based on my, you know, experience in the industry, is probably about accurate. There is also a version of Enterprise Green Communities called Enterprise Green Communities Plus, which is, and I actually don't have a super good understanding of what the difference is between, you know, ESDS versus Enterprise Green Communities, but I'm curious if that's something you've looked into, is like, you know, if, since those are similar, but then the, you know, EGC Plus is one step above, that kind of gets, and my understanding is that EGC Plus is more analogous to LEED Platinum. Is that something that you've looked into? Because then, you know, you could go through getting one certification, but still kind of get that higher level of building performance that, you know, Issaquah through, what we said in our code and everything that we've said is what we're looking for?
So, my understanding is that ESDS was based originally on the Enterprise standard, but it has, we're now up to version 4. something of the state, and it's continued to evolve in response to what's happening with Washington Code and, you know, new technologies and things. None of our public funders would accept an Enterprise or a LEED certification in lieu of the ESDS, so we will have to follow the ESDS. I'm not enough familiar with the Enterprise Plus standard to be able to comment on that. Do you want to?
I think we still have some ongoing questions and discussions with KCHA about sustainability standards. So, you know, we were talking about what particular they are, what amenities they're putting in for achieving the point system through their certification system, but also what are some of those things that we can go a little bit above that, kind of in that plus mentality that you were talking about? So, I know we've talked about things like solar panels, we've talked about things like how many EV-ready and EV-capable spots there would be, no natural gas, for example. So, I think we would love to come back and talk about what those things are in addition as we continue to have these conversations, but certainly if council has particular feedback in that area, we welcome that.
Okay. Great. Yeah, and just in general, like, the way that it's written in the code, picking only LEED Platinum and not giving options for other similar levels of certification, I think is something we should definitely revisit, especially because we require LEED Platinum for mixed use and Build Green 4-Star for residential, which are like two different companies of certification. And also, LEED Platinum is more similar to Build Green 5-Star, but, okay, anyway. Okay, so, on the transparency piece, I think it seems, I mean, this request seems reasonable. I'm curious if, you know, just in terms of, for me, when I'm walking around town, I actually don't, I'm like, if it's just a window into someone's apartment, I don't want to look in there. I would much rather see like an art installation or some plants. So, to the extent that we could put art, you know, on like the loading garage doors or stuff like that, that's something that I'd definitely be in favor of as well. So, is that something that, you know, is, and I see in the design, there's, you know, areas where there's, you know, spaces to put art. So, are there more areas that you think we could, like, push for having more of that in terms of just, you know, interest in the streetscape for pedestrians?
We're certainly willing to look into that. That's a little bit beyond where we are in our design right now, but I think we're interested in art. We've done art in many of our new construction projects, and it always is well-received.
Great. Thank you.
Great questions. Councilmember Ray, and then Deputy Council President, and then Council President.
So, two things I want to go back to, and this is really fun to see this, because I think it was the first vote I took on the City Council was approving this in 2018. So, yeah, so, it is indelibly impressed on my mind. But, Opportunity Center, we kind of breeze by it. What's the cost of the city of the Opportunity Center going to be in the revised? Because it looks like costs have escalated quite a bit.
They have. And so, our most recent estimate, and our estimates right now are based on schematic design, we have been doing work to bring down the costs since then, but we don't yet have updated cost estimates. But at that point, all include, well, all of the shell and core was between $8 and $9 million. I'm sorry, that includes the TI, so, or some amount of TI.
So, a bit more than we were thinking last time around?
Yep.
I would just, I'd like to remind council that originally with that first vote, we talked about setting aside $5.05 million for the shell and some amount of tenant improvements that our tenants would not take over. So, since then, we have also had council determine that they wanted to set aside an additional $5 million to that original $5.05 million. And so, between the state grant of $3 million and money that council has set aside, we have about $10 million towards the Opportunity Center set aside.
Cool. Original design had a daycare center and a kidney center, or what I would call just generically a commercial space that wasn't residential. Looks like we don't have that anymore. Is that true?
Yes, that's true.
That makes me really unhappy.
So, both, I mean, before Spectrum left, both of those entities had withdrawn and were no longer interested, so that would have been a challenge even, I mean, one of the issues, I guess the primary issue we have with the market rate building is including that would reduce the amount of units there and the attractiveness to potential partners.
I'll save my comments to comments, but thanks.
Deputy Council President.
Okay, this question may be too complicated or irrelevant, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. So, I was, so when I was reading what an ESDS is and compared that to a LEED, it looked to me like the ESDS is focused more on how the building is located within the community, and LEED is more focused on the building's environmental impact. There was a lot in ESDS that was about where it was and how close it was to transportation or to recreation or to business districts so people could walk and so forth. And so, I'm just wondering if there's been any analysis about how locating the building can reduce its environmental impact, and especially when it's a TOD project. So, theoretically, over time, there should be a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions if people are using transit rather than their own vehicles. And also, it's close enough to the business district so people could walk to purchase food and other amenities. And so, I'm just wondering if, in that case, and with the checkpoints that they have for ESDS for location, if it would actually be even better than a LEED? Because, so, it was just a thought that we need to kind of look at the long-term environmental impact as well as the building impact, so. And I know that's not a question you can answer tonight, probably.
So, the specific analysis of what that impact might be, we haven't done. There are studies like, that have looked at TOD projects and what their sort of reduction in greenhouse gases are because of people choosing to take public transit instead of driving. But I can't cite one right now. I'm happy to share some of those with you all if you think that would be advantageous.
Council President.
Fantastic. With the housing cooperation agreement, are we only able to apply that to the affordable building, or can we also make related adjustments and changes to the market rate building?
We can make some adjustments to the market rate building, since it's a negotiation, that's an agreement that's entirely with the housing authority, and the property is owned by them. So, for the cooperation agreement, we do have, some of the points in there are, cover both buildings, but we wanted to focus on supporting the affordable housing. So, yes, the short answer is yes.
So, that's my next question, then. Which of these adjustments specifically for the five big adjustments, which are, is staff proposing only for the affordable building, and which are both, and why?
I might need some of Maggie's detailed brain so that I don't misspeak. If, Maggie, you can talk about which ones are specifically for the affordable housing building, and then I can chime in with why and what the administration's reasoning is.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, Maggie, I think you might be muted.
Thank you. I was double muted on my phone and the computer. Absolutely. There are five items. All of the items apply to the affordable building. The only ones under what, how it's written right now that apply to the market rate building are the transparency and frontage requirements. So, yes, this section right here about the ground-level transparency and the buffering of the parking, those are the only two that we're asking for at this moment for the market rate building. So, the exclusive to the affordable building is the five-foot step back and where that, in how that comes about. The swap to ESDS from LEED, that's just for the affordable building, and the change in how the amenity space is calculated is just for the affordable building at this point in time.
And one of the primary reasons for the step back, the waiving of the, one of the step-back requirements, was because we were concerned about preserving affordable units. One of the things that KCHA came to us was that if we were to require that step back on the upper floors, that that would not only affect unit size, as Maggie pointed out in her presentation, but it would cause us to perhaps lose some of the three-bedroom units. And the three-bedroom units are something this administration believes to be really special and important about this project. You don't always get three-bedroom units in an affordable housing project, and that provides families a real opportunity to attend our excellent school system. So, that was something we wanted to preserve in this project, and that was one of the compelling reasons for considering a waiver of that upper-floor step-back requirement. I think we've already talked about the LEED certification versus the certification that KCHA is required to do for the affordable housing building, and kind of motivations for the other ones, unless you have more specific questions.
But my bigger question is, why are you not recommending those changes also to the market rate building, given we have a developer who has told us what the costs are to these and how much they would increase the cost and potentially put that development at risk of even finding a developer who's willing to take it?
Yeah, great question. I think the administration believes that the market dynamics are different for developing a market rate building versus an affordable rate building, that perhaps those costs to the units can be absorbed more easily in a market rate building. And so, that's the reason why we are looking at trying to consider the public benefit with the affordable housing building and preserving that in this agreement.
Andrea, thank you for answering that. I'd like to provide a little more context. You know, in the recent update of Title 18, there were so many community conversations about what the community expected the outcomes to be in these projects, but we really believe that in some cases, when there's a significant public benefit, and there's no doubt aside the project and the rates for this affordable housing building go way beyond what we are getting offered from any private developer anywhere, that we may need to make accommodations to work with a nonprofit partner at King County Housing. And so, I appreciate the amount of cooperation and consideration these two groups have put into trying to figure out what would make it work for our housing partner, housing. out what would make it work for our housing partner, housing, public housing partner. However, I think there's larger conversations to be had if council and the community decides that standards themselves need to be changed.
Go ahead.
You've mentioned you are willing to deal with the holding costs if you don't find a private developer. Can you give us a sense of what those costs are, and whether or not that risks the development capabilities for KCHA on this project?
So, the primary holding costs would be the, the costs that we've put into the site development permit, or at least the share of those costs that are applicable to that site, the, and the acquisition costs. So, those are costs that, for the most part, we've already incurred, or will be incurring and, having to incur in order to get to our, our project, our permits. So, we are, I mean, I can't say we'll do this project no matter what, because there's a lot of whats that are still unknown around tariffs and, and tax cuts and things like that, that, that are going to have impacts on both the cost and the financing of our project. But we are determined, I mean, we, we have, you know, been with this project for so long, we're really determined to see it through. And we have also mentioned in the past, and we haven't thought it would be necessary recently, but we, we also would consider developing market rate housing ourself if the, if we just don't find a market out there, and could probably get that financed easier than a market rate developer.
So, looking around the table, we have a little bit more on the discussion to go. Oh, Councilmember Hall, I forgot. Go ahead, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Some of the questions that have been asked, I had. I, I just want to piggyback off Council President for a second. I mean, one thing we had talked about at the outset was the value of having these buildings look similar, look and feel similar, right, between the affordable and market rate buildings. So, did we, do we consider it from that perspective? Not just that, well, the market rate building could absorb these costs better than the affordable building, but we wanted to create an atmosphere on the parcel where they look similar. I'm just wondering if that's something we've thought about.
It is something that we considered, and is a conflict in some of, of these requirements that we're proposing to waive. So, if we have balconies on one building, but not balconies on another building, that might be some inconsistencies in the design. What, if one has step backs at the upper floors, but another, the affordable building has art treatment or facade treatments that are, you know, visually interesting, but not quite the same as a step back, that's going to be some differences in the design. And I think what the administration is recommending is that those inconsistencies, we felt were acceptable in order to support the affordable housing project and maintain the number of units, and also support the financial viability of that project.
Okay, thank you. That's a good answer. Anything we need to be worried about in terms of change of parking legislation at the state level? Is any of that applicable to the project as we know it today, the TOD project? Or maybe we're still figuring that out?
I, I think we're in part still figuring it out. I think one of the tensions that maybe Dan can speak to better than I can, is while there are local requirements on parking or state requirements that may be superseding local requirements on parking, there's also what the funders will finance and invest in. And those are different standards. And so, so I think we're still trying to figure out what those, those parking changes might mean for us and our regulations as a city, but I don't know if Dan wants to speak to that issue further.
So, I think Issaquah is still in a transition, and that it's, it's hard, I mean, it's not just outside parties, but also our asset managers, who have been pushing us on the parking, because they're concerned about the ability to lease units in the next number of years. I think eventually, when light rail runs here, when it's, the, some more of the TOD-style development happens in central Issaquah, that, that we'll see a lot more people interested in living without a car here. But that's not currently what the market seems like it wants. And so, we have not, I mean, we are doing the parking minimum, but we think that parking minimum is, is what we need to market the units.
Great questions, Councilmember Hall. Thank you. Councilmember Joe. Oh, one more.
I have more, but I just, did you have a follow-up to that?
No, no.
Okay. Is it okay?
Keep going.
So, when I was reading the memo, I had a hard time following the public common amenity space issue. Can you kind of just walk us through exactly what, how that would show up in reality? Is it, is it really that one building likely wouldn't have any balcony space, and all of it would be more common space, but still add up to 148 square feet per unit? Or we might see, like, the 80% AMI units have balcony space, but not the other ones? Or is that still to be determined?
So, I, I might ask Maggie to jump in on this, but I, there will be some private amenity space associated with units that either have a balcony above the third floor or, or on the fourth floor, have, have some private space on the fourth floor courtyard or between the, in the middle of the building.
Yeah. I, I can speak to this a little bit. So, we have eight floors for this building total, and we have level four, the floor of level four is a transition between the three levels of concrete, and then the wood structure above, and that's also where the parking stops. So, we have a lid, if you will, across level four, where the parking is underneath that. And so, we have a big plaza opportunity on level four. What we've done right now is there are some units that have private amenity space, but we've placed it in places where it doesn't add significant additional cost or construction challenges for the building. So, that floor where we have that transition, and we have that big common amenity space, all of the units, all of the apartments that are on that level that face that common amenity space, also have a private amenity space, because it's an easy place to put it in, because they, you just have a door, we already have the surface there, we already have landscaping going on and all of that. So, those units do get a private amenity space associated with their apartment, with their home. And in some ways, that's a really nice trade-off as well, because it gives them buffer from the common area, because as you might imagine, there are windows into bedrooms into those, into those apartments, and you wouldn't really want common amenity space coming right up to your bedroom window. So, having that private space in front gives you some amount of buffer between the activity of everybody gathering and what's going on inside your individual apartment. We also have private amenity spaces for the units that are at grade, for the ones that are at the ground level, because again, it's an easy, cost-effective place to provide them. And so, we, we've provided space there as well, which again, also acts as like a buffer between the more public spaces and your actual residential unit. So, they're serving sort of dual purpose, and providing more to those units than just the space itself. They're also functioning in sort of a security feature, or just some visual security and buffering between what's going on publicly and what's going on privately. Where we've avoided them are on places where they would be what we call bolt-on balconies, where they would be just hanging off the side of the building, largely because the balconies themselves cost money, but also the installation of them. Everywhere you want to put one, you need at least two, usually three places of penetration through your exterior walls, so it creates complications from a construction standpoint, waterproofing and everything. It, it opens you up to more liability and places for leaks and things to go wrong. So, it's, it's a, a safer or more assured construction, if you don't have to have all of those coming out of the side of the building. And I think part of your question was, would the buildings look different? And, and yes, so there'd be a few, you know, private spaces in these locations where there, where it's easy to apply them, but there would be no bolt-on balconies. And right now, without an exception for the market rate building, they would be required to provide all those balconies.
Okay. Thank you very much, both of you, for walking me through that. That makes a lot more sense. And then, my last point of confusion when reading the memo was around the decorative screening and, and material variation, and what that really means, in reality. Because I think, I mean, I think if someone asked me, I would rather like to see, like, someone stoop, like, some residential or commercial spaces, right, on the street, right? So, what exactly would it look like in reality if it was this material variation and said? I'm just hope, I guess assurance that it wouldn't be like a flat wall with artwork, which would look nice, but still flat, would, would, would feel weird as a pedestrian walking next to you. So, can you walk me through what those mean?
Yeah. So, the code also has requirements for modulation and material transitions and things like that, which we're not asking for exceptions on. So, you won't have long flat facades of absolutely nothing going on. In the facades that face the public plaza, that's where we have probably arguably our flattest facades, but large portions of that are amenity space in both buildings. And so, we would have large amounts of glazing into all those amenity spaces, actually more like storefront glazing into those amenity spaces. We have canopies planned over top of entries for those, and those amenity spaces are also highlighted, at least right now, in the design with masonry, with brick. So, that's what we mean by you'd have material transitions and sort of an express cadence along those places. Places where we felt like the facade was looking more flat or more mundane, right up against that trash room in particular, the trash unloading, that's where we were proposing additional landscape and/or art to help soften that edge and, and engage the plaza. As for the streetscape, the core streetscape, there's actually quite a bit of modulation on both buildings along that frontage. So, it's not just a continuous, flat frontage, it's a frontage that steps back and forth. In some cases, it's so that we can provide site triangles, there's very large site triangles required for vehicles exiting both the loading spaces and the, the garage itself. And so, you have to have kind of a wider berth there that's set in, so that as a car goes to exit, they can look left and look right, and really see where pedestrians are, make sure that you have a safe exit. And then, in some cases, it's just to help with modulation and variety to the streetscape. In terms of decorative screening, the parking for the market rate building is kind of up against that frontage, but we do have the ability to mimic the size and scale of windows up above. So, we've planned for openings that would allow for air circulation in and out of the garage, which might actually ultimately help from a sustainability standpoint in terms of naturally ventilating the garage, instead of having to mechanically ventilate everything in the garage. So, they'd be porous, you'd be able to see through them, but we could, for security reasons, you'd want something there, you would want it where someone could crawl through it. And so, you know, we, we've been planning for a decorative screen, something that had a pattern, likely metal, but some sort of pattern to it. You know, and there's a lot of different options out there, we haven't gotten into that level of detail for the design, but there's a lot of options in terms of, you know, what kind of pattern you have, and how interesting and intricate the pattern is. Does that help answer question?
Yeah, it does. And thank you. I totally forgot to even think about, like, massing and modulation. So, it's not going to be a blank wall, no matter what. So, okay.
And Councilmember Hall, from a city process standpoint, I'd also like to point out that the Development Commission, this is something we would anticipate them reviewing, and looking at what are the city requirements for modulation and materials, and providing some recommendations for the design, if they felt that the proposed design doesn't really meet our standards. And so, there's still a public process as they apply for their building permit, and we get into more of the details of design that the Development Commission would help oversee.
Good point. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Dan, first, I'd like to thank you for your years of dedication to this project. It has been a long process, and I was quite disappointed when Hal Ferris moved from his firm, and it, it did signal to me that the market rate project was going to be in some, you know, difficulty, and it did turn out that way. My question, I guess, to you is, for many years, I've served on the PSRC Regional Transit Oriented Development Committee through my other day work, and we always talk about the legislation that could be possible. The question I have for you is, has there been anything that has been considered in the last two or three sessions, or that you would like to see out there that we possibly could work on between now and when this project comes to fruition, that could help make this project more viable and more possible for ultimate construction? And I may not have the answer right here and now, but if you could work with the administration and talk about that, and we can work it into our legislative agenda, and try to do other things that could help, and I know the administration's thinking about this every day, but we'd like to be a collaborator and a team member to help you with that. But if you have any comments right now, certainly like to hear it, but that question can be passed on to the administration too.
Sorry. I understand that, or saw that this year, there was some legislation that passed around affordable housing, which limits local jurisdictions' ability to require step backs above the fifth floor and modulation of affordable projects. But that was only for affordable projects, and that's not, I think, what you're, you're talking about more, just kind of any, any housing projects, and especially ones that might benefit the, our market rate building. So, I don't know of anything that has been proposed that hasn't gotten anywhere, or anything that, that did get passed, other than that one affordable bill.
Okay. And I know you live and breathe this, so if anything does come up, or ideas develop in, you know, your two o'clock AM waking hours, please let us know, and, and help the administration, help you try to find legislative solutions that we can advocate for, if at all possible. Thank you.
Because we'll be up as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Everybody has had round one of questions. I want to check in and see if there's any following questions. And if not, what we could do is move around the table and provide general comments that you want to have, but also take a chance at, or take some time to answer the two questions. Does council agree with the administration's recommendation to approve the HCA? And are there changes to the HCA that council would like to make? So, do we have any additional questions first? Otherwise, I'm just going to pick a random name out of a hat and, yeah, there, see? Didn't even have to pick a name. No question, dang. Okay, Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, last one. Yeah, sorry. So, the rationale behind why the fifth-floor step-back was unaffordable seemed like perfectly reasonable, almost like, why didn't we think of that? Like, if it is at that transition level, like, is, is the fifth floor, excuse my question, is the fifth-floor step-back a common element of city codes, like, in King County? Like, perhaps this is something we need to look at. I'm just curious, is this common?
And Minnie may be able to speak to this better than I can. I know Director Dollywall is on the line to answer questions, because we, she has looked at this recently. It's my understanding that some cities have that requirement, not all cities have that. And the goals would be aesthetic design, what makes the character of the, the neighborhood, as well as preserving view corridors, things like that. And so, I think that was compelling for the most recent public process where this was considered. But perhaps Minnie can speak a little bit better to how many cities have that requirement versus how many cities don't.
Thank you, Andrea. Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Pauli. You know, I don't have the exact number of how many cities have it, but we did take our Planning and Policy Commission members and are on a tour, and they looked at various, you know, buildings in Kirkland and Redmond, and there's a wide variety and mix of things. It comes, it's, you know, most of these requirements stem from reducing the scale of the building. And we, we figured, you know, most, the feedback we received from that tour was the step backs actually breaks down the scale of the building and creates more interest. And so, the city code requirements have been in the books since the city adopted the Architectural Design Manual, so these were not changed with the latest Title 18 update. And that's something that has come, you know, was carried forward. There are a couple of regulations. One, you know, when you're transitioning from your large open parking lots, surface parking lots, you do want some building height along the street edge. So, there's a street wall concept, and then you have this step back on the upper floors, which really adds to the, the top of the building. So, you have a base, middle, and the top of the building. But in Issaquah's context, you know, you have beautiful views, and so, having those step backs of the upper floors do lend to taking advantage of the setting that the city has in terms of getting the Issaquah Alps city has in terms of getting the Isqal Alps, you know, for folks to enjoy that. But most of these requirements come from reducing the scale of the building. If you're out and about, you can look at Redmond's where they don't have underground parking, which is sort of the situation here, which adds to the bulk of the building and the midsize scale and having that straight wall. But having that transition at the third floor helps, but it doesn't provide a top to the building. So we can add this to the list for future, look more in depth with some urban design help, but we're not tackling this change with this current annual updates to Title 18. We have added discussion with Planning and Policy Commission to add flexibility for private and open space, so they'll be looking at that this year.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Kelly, are you ready to go? Is that why you're looking at me like that? Okay. Not seeing any other microphones for questions, so we have volunteer. Councilmember Jiang is going to start. Comments and answers to the two questions would be helpful.
Great. Yeah, so in terms of generally agreeing with approving the Housing Cooperation Agreement, I think, you know, there's definitely, like, we need to make this project happen, and I think most of these amendments are fairly minor. So overall, I'm okay with it. You know, if ESD, if it really is like super, super onerous to get an additional certification that's not ESDS, I think it's probably okay. It's not great, but definitely support the administration continuing to work with them on, you know, going above and beyond the minimum requirements of ESDS, even if there's not a specific certification. In addition, so on this whole setback thing, I must say that when I looked at it, I thought the proposed design looked better than the code minimum design. And I surveyed multiple friends as well. I was like, do you think this one looks better? And everyone's like, yeah, this one where it's like five floors straight and then back, that, you know, because most of the time when you're experiencing the streetscape, it's you're like on the street. So if you look up, you know, it's like having the top floor setback, you know, I understand that it kind of decreases the amount of shade in the street, but it doesn't matter if the setback is at the fifth floor or at the third floor. And ultimately, honestly, I think having like the third floor be what you see from the street and the rest of it be setback does feel more human scale. And truly, I was like, wait, this one looks better than the couldn't have been one. So I definitely think that there's ways that we could amend the code to, you know, give folks more optionality. And in this specific case, I think for the affordable building, that makes a ton of sense. I would even say because this proposed design looks better, maybe we should consider doing it for the market rate building, too. Because again, like, the whole point of these design standards of the code is to make things look better, and if it doesn't look better, then maybe we should think, hmm, are there ways that we can change it to get the desired outcome? Other than that, I think, you know, the transparency thing, again, like, in this situation, I think it's totally reasonable, and that's something we should probably revisit. I do think, like, when I've been to other cities, you know, in Bend, Oregon, there's all these cool murals everywhere. There's like a totally flat wall, but they have these beautiful murals, like multi-colored, like beautiful quotes and stuff like that. And I think that's something where I've never looked at that and thought, wow, I wish I had a window to see into the back of this coffee shop to see where they're brewing coffee. Like, I've literally never had that thought. And so I think, you know, there are, there's different things that make a street engaging. Art can be one of them. I honestly, like, I know that transparency is a big thing for urban design or whatever, but personally, I, it's, I don't know, I'm not that into like looking into people's front doors or whatever. And then I think the other, the other pieces, the common outdoor, you know, amenity space, I would concur that, like, I mean, I have one of those tiny decks, I never use it. And so I think having it as, you know, common space where possible is probably better. And then, yeah, and then on the, oh, and I think that was it. But generally, I'm okay with all of these amendments and would recommend potentially doing the setback thing on the market rate building as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Jiang, we had a long conversation about the market rate building because we didn't want to take away PPC and the community's opportunity to agree with you that it's a better look. So rather than offer it in, for one market rate building in one agreement, we wanted to pull that conversation out. And so I think if it's not in this agreement, there is the potential for it to be included in a citywide change, because I have a feeling that many people liked the alternative. So if it doesn't show up in here, it's very likely to be possible once it's gone through, like, planning policy and some community comments, but I agree with you 100%. Councilwoman Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This whole conversation makes me want to cry. This is a project that has been incredibly near and dear to my heart for nine-plus years now. I think it is unbelievably important for our community. We need workforce housing. We need transit-oriented development. We need services for our working families. I don't have any problems with the individual details, the elements, the facets of this HCA. I think the administration has done a good job explaining them. I just have more existential, strategic-level questions. I do have, I do have concerns about applying different standards to these two different buildings. I think that it could create a really weird feeling. I'm nervous that the market rate, market rate building will ever be built. I'm nervous that the Opportunity Center will ever be built. It's been five years since Spectrum left. If you haven't found a partner by then, you know, I don't know how you possibly go forward with a building permit submission in three months without having the market rate building. I mean, there's just existential questions, like, what happens if that building never gets built? And I don't know what the answers are to that question. I don't know what it means for us as a city. Maybe you'll tell me it doesn't mean anything, and it's all on KCHA, and, Dan, you have a super tough job, and every time you come here and talk to us, I appreciate it. But I just, I just have existential questions about where this project is going and, you know, how it gets built to get us, because we need the market rate on these apartments as much as we need the building that Dan is going to build, right? Because the market rate in a situation like this, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, that's workforce housing, too. And so, you know, you know, you're asking about these HCA facets, and like I said, fine, the administration's done a good job explaining it. It all makes sense. I appreciate Kelly's analysis, sorry, Councilmember Jiang's analysis of the standards involved. But I'm just super nervous. We need this. We need this to succeed, and I'm just miserable that in the five years since Spectrum has left, we haven't found a market rate partner. You know, and I don't, I'm not here to kick you, Dan, but if KCHA can do the market rate side, do it. Like, we need that building as well, and that development will be a failure if there's a nice building on the northern half and a hole in the ground on the southern half or vice versa. So that's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. First of all, I think this idea of the Housing Cooperation Agreement testing out our code is a wonderful opportunity, and it's very effective to have it come from an affordable housing developer who, you know, we have a relationship with and trust and all of that. So I am 110% behind making changes. I definitely want this to feed into our code review because we have heard over and over again from community members who are very concerned about housing costs that, you know, if we don't get this right, if we continue to make housing more expensive, that, you know, our kids aren't going to be able to live here, people won't be able to downsize, all of those things. So I've also heard, you know, what Councilmember Martz has said about being very concerned about the market rate building. I also am very concerned about that. I recognize that the profits that you get from either selling this parcel, this condo ization, are going to feed into the ability to make that affordable housing work. And so I think for those reasons, including these fairly benign, I would say, adjustments to the code in order to be able to encourage a market rate developer to take on that project and move this forward, is really in our benefit. And I think toward that same end, working in a way that quickly makes the same modifications to the market rate side also more likely ensures that the two buildings will happen closer to the same time and look more similar, which I know we've heard, we're, we've got some concerns that we're going to create one building that maybe is going to look a little bit more basic, and then the other one is required to have patios when we've also heard that, you know, not even market rate buildings. In fact, I looked around in Issaquah and Bellevue, and there are very few of the new buildings that have balconies on them. So I think we should heed this advice and make the changes to both of the buildings.
Councilmember Ray.
Thanks so much. I think that the modifications that have been proffered all seem very reasonable. I think the discussion we've had up here kind of supports that. I also love the idea of taking advantage of it to take the Title 18 code out for a test drive and kick the tires, and we're finding, you know, maybe some opportunities for improvement. I think that's, that's super cool. I have a hobby horse. I get on this hobby horse whenever I get an opportunity, and it's about commercial space. Because not only is it Affordable Housing Week, but it is Economic Development Week. And we just heard at our committee of the whole last week that the number one issue identified by our businesses that they are facing is lack of space in the city of Issaquah. And so when I see the commercial space, which was the kidney center and the daycare, and I don't, I mean, those would have been cool, but I don't care that that, we have those amenities there, but I really feel very strongly that there are some, there is some commercial space built into this. And I am frustrated beyond belief that we put in much of our downtown five-over-one housing with no commercial space, and it's biting us in the, you know, whatever, now. And so I don't want to be that, to be the barrier to make this thing work, but there's got to be a way to make this work and also get those amenities because it's important to our community that we have commercial space.
Councilmember Ray, can you take that one, one thought further? You've heard tonight about the conflicting interests, and so I think your points on including commercial are super relevant. Would you do that if the building community told you that they cannot do it, and you have to wait 10 years for market conditions to change for them to add it? Or would you propose going forward with residential without commercial? Because those are exactly the challenges and conundrums that you're up against. That's why you heard the 200 units from Dan.
Yep.
So just take that storyline further, because you have been really good at telling that story for eight years.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter, I mean, it does work, and the differences are, I mean, it doesn't work as well, I get that, but it works. And what we're seeing right now and what we saw in the data from last Monday's meeting, the rentals cost per square foot of commercial now is higher than the rental cost per square foot of residential. So the argument starts to break down for me. So it's easier to just do all residential, but part of building residential in our community is meeting the larger community needs, which includes commercial space. Hobby horse off.
Your voice will be missed. There's a couple of people that indicated they wanted to speak. I think it was Deputy Council President, Councilmember Hall, Council President, and then back to Councilmember Jiang.
Okay, so overall, I, the five suggested changes I am supportive of, I did want to focus on one area that Andrea also referred to, and that the stepback, to me, to me, it's more important that we conserve those three-bedroom apartments. And you talked about that as well. But we, we have a changing demographic in our community, and three-bedroom apartments are very important from a cultural standpoint. In some cultures, it's very important to have multigenerational opportunities, and then also for larger families, very hard to find three bedrooms. And so to me, the higher need is, is that three bedrooms and not the stepback. So, and also, the Together Center project in Redmond has three bedrooms, and those are highly, highly prized. Those were, I think, rented out almost immediately. So it would be, it will be something, will be a great amenity for our community. I wanted to agree with Councilmember Jiang. I also have a balcony, yes, we hardly ever use it. So, yeah, it's a secret, a little secret about older buildings where nobody uses those balconies. And then, and then I wanted to bring up something we haven't talked about, and that is the, we had hoped to have Health Point and Valley Cities as the residence in the Opportunity Center. And I just want to point out, if we have 40% AMI and below, we will have some people who will need those onsite services. And that has been one of the success points at the Together Center in Redmond, is that they have a whole building that is 30% AMI and below. And the great success there is that people can walk down the stairs and go to their health appointments and their counseling appointments. And so for the 30% AMI that we are hoping to have in this building, we really have to be thinking about what amenities are going to be there. And so I know that's something that we're going to discuss later on, and unfortunately, Health Point withdrew. And I understand completely the situation that health providers are in right now due to the federal turmoil. But that's something that later on we need to be thinking about is, is what kind of supports are going to be necessary in our, in our affordable housing building to support the people that are in that building at that rate. So at any rate, I think we should call this the Andrea Snyder Project. We should have a big banner.
Snyder Landis.
Yes, 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 absolutely. Because the two of you have just worked on this relentlessly, and we would not be here, I think we all acknowledge, we would not be here without the work that's been done and consistently been done to get this to where we are right now. So I hope we can move forward, and I will support all of the proposed changes.
Thank you. And I think it was Hall, Hall, Jiang, Council President? Okay, Councilmember Hall.
Well, echo all the thanks and the Snyder Landis. Sounds like, yeah, what was it you said? It sounds like an excellent law firm right there. Anyways, a couple things. So agree, definitely a great opportunity to test our code and kick the tires, as was said. Agree, we need to make these changes to make the project happen, to make this important project happen. I am concerned that we're moving, you know, away from our goal, which was to keep the look and feel of the, and the experience of both building, of both buildings similar. So the experience of being in a market unit and affordable unit felt the same, and we're bringing people together, and there's kind of unity and equity in there. But I agree with the comment, I agree with the comment that we really need to have a deeper conversation with the community if we want to do that, if we want these changes to live kind of in market rate housing, too. I think my initial reaction would have been, oh, well, if developers are saying that this is what they need in order to make things pencil out, maybe we consider that. But then Director Dollywall came in and was talking about how it's kind of a mix in the region. Also, the stepback was created in order to decrease the scale, to make it easier for developers, too. So we're having some kind of conflicting things that we're going to have to work through as a community, with the developer community, with us as a council, like, there's a lot of policy questions there. So I feel as if we don't have a choice on what, we're going to have to wait and have those conversations more intentionally. But I do agree with moving forward with the changes that need to be made for the affordable building, so.
And if I'm hearing correctly, you are saying that if there is a potential to clarify something in this agreement, to emphasize the importance of compatibility to the greatest extent possible, you would like to see that or not that far?
I mean, if we feel like there would be any value in that, perhaps, but I think the reality is there's going to be some visual differences, noticeable, visible differences between the buildings. So we might be past that. I mean, if staff thinks that that would be valuable addition somewhere, where we, you know, working towards the spirit of kind of sameness and pull some of the language that we've been using tonight, then all for it, you know.
Complimentary, not us and them type stuff. Councilmember Jiang.
Thanks to, I would just want to give a shout to Councilmember Ray for beating the hobby horse of the commercial space, because I do think this is really, really important. You know, in terms of, like, when you think about what makes a city a city and what are the things that people love about it, it is the small businesses. And I think, I mean, there's just not enough commercial spaces on, you know, on Front Street, Gilman Village, and there, you know, the opportunity to have Street, Gilman Village, and there, you know, the opportunity to have, like, five-over-ones with businesses is something that we should actually take seriously. So I looked into, you know, in this presentation, it seems like currently the market rate building is designed for 205 apartments. There's supposed to be eight on the ground floor, so that would reduce the number to 197, which is not that big of a difference, in my opinion. The other thing is, what I've heard from developers is that you can't underwrite income from commercial space unless it's an anchor tenant. So even if, you know, basically, it's like, even if they are like, oh, yeah, we could totally rent this out easily, the bank's like, I don't know. And so that's essentially what it comes, what the issue comes down to. However, seeing that King County Housing Authority hasn't found a market rate partner and has signaled openness to doing the market rate development themselves, is that perhaps an opportunity for us to say, hey, you know, for you, 197 versus 205, maybe that's not that big of a difference. Are you open to potentially, you know, having commercial space? And is that something that we could, you know, put into the agreement? Because it's not like, if someone's not going to take a 205-unit, like, residential development, you know, then it's just seeing that we haven't, like, giving up the concession of, like, oh, we're not going to have any commercial space, we're not getting a developer anyway, then maybe this could be an opportunity for us to, you know, say, hey, maybe King County Housing Authority, if you want to develop some commercial spaces in what would have instead been eight residential units, actually make more money from renting out the commercial space. I think that's definitely something that we should consider.
Councilmember Ray, you're going to lose a partner here. Be sure you don't want to stay. Council President.
Well, I was going to also jump in on that arena. I believe some housing developments are, that couldn't be sold as mixed use originally, are being developed or are being required to have taller first-floor ceilings so that they could transition over to commercial. And so I wonder whether we might look at something like that, which would allow them to sell it as housing to the financial market and then transition if they do have that availability of commercial renters, and so whether that might be a possibility.
That is a great point, because up in the Highlands, you can go buy these townhouse residences that have first-floor businesses in them. It's a fantastic model, so. Lots and lots of ideas. Who have we not heard from? Councilmember Joe, are you the last? Yes, you are. I think.
Just on the policy questions, I think the administration's done a great job trying to find, a great job trying to find the middle ground and ideas that can move this HCA forward. I compliment the administration and all the parties there for trying to find a way to move this forward. And I don't really have any changes to the agreement for us to consider, other than just for my fellow council members, this will not be the last change we're going to be making to this. And, you know, we, there's great flexibility from all eight of us up here to try to get this project through. But we need to be prepared to be making some more difficult decisions as we go forward to make this project go forward. Just from the National Association of Home Builders, the tariffs on a single-family home are raising the price of a house by their estimation, if they all go through, by $9,200 per unit. Okay? So it's a little different for, you know, buildings like this, but that just gives you an idea in terms of scale. And for every $1,000 increase in the price of a home, new numbers came out that indicated that 1,000, about 1,025 families are priced out of being able to get that home based on 10% down and the current interest rate. So what we're doing here is trying to keep the price of the units down and trying to make the project feasible and built. Those are all great things. In this environment, with the other things going on at the other levels, you know, it puts more pressure on us, so we need to be prepared to be working with our partners to make it happen. I appreciate all the hard work that's been done here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Mertz.
One follow-up on the subject of patios, because patios are fascinating. I have a data point where I can tell you exactly what a patio is or is not worth, because I have a 24-year-old King County Sheriff's Office 911 operator kid who recently moved into a development in a neighboring city. And that development, he had the choice between air conditioning and no patio, or a patio and, sorry, a patio and no air conditioning, or air conditioning and no patio, and he absolutely chose air conditioning and no patio.
There you go.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for all these comments. I'm going to look at Andrea to see if she has everything she has, needs.
I believe so. So what I have heard is to continue negotiations with KCHA on environmental certification items and sustainability for the project, to look at commercial space and what we can negotiate there. And I've heard a couple of different things on whether we should require or waive these requirements for both buildings. So I've kind of heard yes and no from council on that, but general support for the agreement as it stands.
Thank you. Great conversation tonight. This is a very unusual one for you to have, because we're not in a development agreement, we're in a housing agreement. Most of these details were usually hashed out at the Development Commission and with city staff. So thank you for all your participation tonight and your great comments. Dan and Andrea, I'm just amazed that we are all still married together. There's not been a project that we have had that has had more bumps, hiccups, and reasons to just throw the towel in than this one. And so thank you both so much for all of your work on this and the fantastic explanation provided in the staff presentation from King County Housing. And Andrea, you're, the life's off your, the years off your life for all the efforts that you have put into this. I'm very confident it's going to happen. I do agree with Councilmember Joe, there's probably a few more little twists, but we're going to get through them. It's a super strong team. Very excited about this project. Just to let you know, these projects are not happening all over the place. There's one that's going to happen in Issaquah. That's a huge, big deal. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you, Dan, and thank your team.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Thank you, council.
The next item on our agenda, since my computer died, is ID 1875, Social and Community Connection Initiative. And the action before council tonight is to make a recommendation. While Dale, our city, Assistant to the City Administrator, presenting, I do want to add a little introduction to this item. While this is not usually something we talk about on council daisies, it is an issue within communities around the country and within Issaquah that people are feeling disconnected from their communities. It's come for a bunch of different reasons. It's come over a long period of time. And from the different meetings I do with clubs, homeowners associations, and just individuals at coffee, I hear about this more than anything else. I hear about people desiring to find more opportunities to enrich our community bonds. And so just for example, Councilmember De Michelle and I are hosting another convening this week with our service providers, who are in a really difficult situation right now. And the difference it makes for them to know that they're being listened to, that things are happening, that people want to know what's going on in their world, it's uplifting, even though we're not ourselves responsible for some of the federal changes that are causing all the grief. So I'm very excited about this. I think we have a wonderfully engaging community. I think we have a community who's desirous of some special effort being put in to address the feelings that folks are having now of being alone and being lonely in a community of 42,000 people. So I'm going to ask Dale to give us a presentation and work with the council on some discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Polly, and good evening, councilmembers. Dale Markey Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator, coming off a first meeting with our Community Connection Action Group earlier today, which I'll share more about a little bit later in the presentation, but thrilled to be taking us into the nine o'clock hour here. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the city council with an update on the 2025 citywide priority of nurturing connections and building strong community bonds, as well as to collect your feedback on the administration's recommended approach for this priority. Tonight, the direction that we're requesting is your review of the administration's proposed vision, mission, goals, strategies, all that live within the attached action plan. And specifically, these two questions. Does the city council agree with the overarching vision, city, mission, and goals of this initiative? And do you have feedback on the aligned strategies and actions within the plan? First, I'll start off with a little bit of background. Mayor Polly just offered some, but I want to provide a little bit more. In 2023, the U.S. Surgeon General Vivek Murthy issued an advisory entitled "Our Epidemic of Loneliness and Isolation." This report described decades of observation and research on the impacts of loneliness and isolation on individuals' physical and emotional health, and the impacts that those on individuals have on their community more broadly. Noted in the report was that nearly 50% of adults across the country report experiencing loneliness on a regular basis. And this was prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. As many of us, I think, ourselves experienced, the pandemic worsened that experience for many. And we saw declines in civic engagement and volunteerism. We also saw increases in online activity and technology use over in-person connection, and an erosion of the skills to engage socially with the people in our community, our neighbors, and folks that we would see out in the world. The report talks about that this is most acutely experienced by young people and those 65 and older, or as one of our Equity Board members would say, 65 and better. And, you know, I think that's, the data bears that out, that it's most frequently experienced in our youth, as well as our older residents. So Issaquah, what does this national report have to do and what does it mean for Issaquah? We believe that Issaquah is not immune to these national trends. And in fact, we might be, as a community, more susceptible to these nationwide trends, given a few elements that are true here in the community. I think it's important to note, our behavioral health team has shared that they've seen this, that almost every single day, they encounter someone who is acutely experiencing loneliness and isolation. Your young people, I was able to recently attend a PTA meeting at the middle school last month, and we hear from teachers and parents and service providers that work with our youth, that they are struggling, they're struggling to build healthy relationships with each other. We also know that Issaquah has above-average tech sector and telework population that can lead to a level of isolation for many folks in those businesses. And also, not noted on the slide, but I think important to note, is the increasing diversity within our community. Language barriers and cultural barriers can often provide increased loneliness and isolation, especially for newcomers to a community. Now, the image on the left side of your screen is a little hot preview of something we'll talk about next week. But the preliminary results from our 2025 community survey also indicate that there are some trends that are alive and well here in our community. Well, 77% of residents say they feel they belong in Issaquah, which is really as positive and compelling. 55, so just about half of residents, say they feel connected to their neighbors. 43%, less than half, feel that it's easy to meet and connect with folks in the community. And unfortunately, 28% feel connected to their broader community here in Issaquah. In 2024, as you all remember well, the administration led an update of the Issaquah Strategic Plan, working with a community task force that also included members of our city council and city staff to update the objectives and actions within the strategic plan to guide our work for the next five years. Two actions were added within the Social and Economic Vitality Section that explicitly refer to this epidemic of loneliness and the need and commitment to building social connection and a sense of belonging here in Issaquah. And Mayor Polly made nurturing connections and building strong community bonds a priority, a top-five priority for 2025. Following the mayor's prioritization of this initiative, staff got right to work. We wanted to act quickly to make sure that we could take steps immediately to start planning for how we would approach building, building some initiatives that would support this effort. First, we had a leadership discussion. Our department leaders, supervisors, and managers across the city came together in January and shared about the way they see this epidemic show up, both in their work with community members and with staff members directly. At the same time, executive department staff, which is a fancy way of saying me, and our Human Services Division staff, we reached out to some local organizations, homeowners associations, and community members who were already actively engaged in the work of building social connection and belonging, to learn more about the work they were doing, what they were seeing as successes in that work, what they were seeing as challenges in that work, and what they felt that the city might be able to do to support in the ongoing work. We then, in February, March, and April, assembled a core city team of staff members from all departments to develop the action plan, the draft action plan in the packet for tonight. And then, as it says on this timeline, just today, we had the first meeting of our Community Connection Action Group, which will convene again in the next month or so to finalize its charter, mission, and objectives. The focus of the Core City Group was developing a clear aspirational vision. What would a future look like in which all members of our community felt like they belonged? And so after some iteration, the proposed vision here on the screen and in your packet, all Issaquah community members feel they belong here through social connection and strong community bonds. We know from the survey right now, about 77% of folks feel that way, not the 100% the aspiration we're headed towards. And then after developing that vision, city staff worked on a city mission. So a clear, compelling, and most importantly, feasible statement of what the city's contribution to achieving that vision could be, knowing the city is but one actor in the effort of achieving that vision. It is certainly not something that we would go alone, and in fact, probably not even something that we would be at the lead or the helm of. Following the development of that city mission, we sought, as a group, to develop goals aligned to the mission that, I think important to emphasize, felt within the scope and skill and capacity of city staff. And you can see these four goals here on the screen. Empowering community leaders, enhancing behavioral health support, raising awareness and encouraging engagement, and strengthening neighborhood and community ties. And then, from that point, the group worked on aligning to each goal, strategies and actions that would, in the near term, get us closer to each of those defined goals. They might not, in the next two years, we might not achieve those goals, but they will be the first steps in pursuit of those goals. These strategies and actions largely describe enhancements to current city work streams and activities that staff are already engaged in, with the exception of the first strategy around forming and convening a community action group. The theory that underpins a lot of this work is that by building staff knowledge and skill, as well as community member knowledge and skill about the need to foster connection around our community, that over time, we'll be able to take a pro-connection lens to our work, in the same way one might provide an equity lens to their work, and that that lens can be taken to all elements of work. I think a great example of this, our Parks Planning Department is represented on our Core City Team, and we've talked a lot about the activation around the senior center plaza and what it would look like, rather than just, you know, to cut a ribbon and say, we're open for business, to really think strategically about how to activate the space in a way that brings people to it constantly and repeatedly in the first months, to really make sure that it becomes a place that people are gathering and connecting with each other. So I think that's one example of how we're thinking, this is something coming down the line, it's already a project in motion, it's already something we're going to do, how do we enhance that experience to make it a pro-connection event or a pro-connection The action plan outlines a biennial scope. I think there is a lot of opportunity to modify and adjust our strategies as we go. Really, the plan here is to be ambitious but feasible. We do not want to overpromise and underdeliver on this, and we want to be really cognizant of the limitations on staff capacity. given what this group knows very much so, our true limitations on our ability and time to deliver on some of these promises. And so you can see here, in 2025, the real focus has been on forming the team, launching this community action group, collecting baseline data, activating key city-owned spaces, and conducting initial rounds of community outreach, some of which were discussed in the Community Action Group today. And then in 2026, continuing to focus on expansion of programming, supporting the programming of our community partners, launching a campaign, an educational campaign, around this epidemic of loneliness and how to intervene, and then continuing to convene and conduct ongoing meetings of the Community Connection Group. The administration is not presenting distinct options tonight. Instead, we wanted to share some guiding questions that have been used at multiple decision points, and I think highlight the real focus of the planning effort here. What is within our sphere of influence? What can we actually impact? What is the city or one of our partners best positioned to do in service of the goal or the outcome? And do we have the staff capacity, knowledge, and skill to commit to anything that we've outlined in this plan? If the answers to that last question was no, it didn't go in the plan, as of right now. In terms of impacts with this action plan, there's no expected financial impact of this in this current biennium. In terms of policy, not really any expected notable policy impacts here. Instead, it's really a focus on, as I said, implementing current programs and projects with a pro-connection lens. And then, the place we do expect impact is in this last piece, impact within the community. A lot of the groups and individuals, especially the folks that I had the opportunity to meet with today, they're working really hard in their own silo. And for some of them, just being in the same room with other folks doing the work, it was really incredible to watch the connections that were flying and saying, "Oh, I didn't know about that. Can I get invited to that?" We really think that bolstering the capacity of our partner organizations here already doing this work is going to be a huge boon for the community. We also think the city can help connect, amplify, and scale current ongoing efforts, and also connect organizations and individuals with each other to share resources and coordinate efforts. So the recommendation tonight is to support the administration's plan and to provide feedback, specifically on the vision, mission, and action plan. Following tonight's meeting, we'll implement feedback from you all. And it says launch here, literally today. It was a doodle when I first put these materials together, so it could have been the next week. But we will be reconvening that group in the next two to four weeks to finalize their charter. And then throughout quarter two through quarter four, finalizing a collection plan for behavioral health and support services, especially the data, so we understand where we're starting, and ongoing meetings of our Core City Team to continue to coordinate efforts. The plan will be to come back to city council late in the year or early in 2026 to provide you an update on how efforts are going. So with that, again, the direction needed tonight. Does the city council agree with the overarching vision, mission, and goals? And does the city council have feedback on the aligned strategies and actions within the plan?
Thank you, Dale. So let's do questions before we go into the feedback. Are there any just, "Oh, wow, it's a race tonight." Okay. Councilmember Joe, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to be Councilmember Hall there. Hate playing second fiddle to a tall, handsome, young person, darn it. All right. I really appreciate the comment that you made concerning the way that we could best engage our seniors with the new park that's going to be developing. That got me to think, how else can we engage our other volunteers? One of the points that you made early in your presentation was that volunteerism is down. One of the experiences that I've had that I've noticed is that when volunteers are not used, when volunteers are not engaged, they become disengaged and then are not volunteering anymore. So as I was thinking about this project, we have a number of systems already in place in our cities, such as our CERT volunteers. It's an organization that the volunteers are preparing for emergencies mostly, but they're supposed to be embedded in the neighborhood to help in an emergency. So one of the thoughts that I had that perhaps could be duplicated with other volunteer groups that we have is to have our CERT members perhaps go and visit one or two neighbors that they have never met or a neighbor that has just moved into the neighborhood, and tell them what they do as a volunteer and the resources that they have available to help in an emergency, so that the person that is new to the neighborhood or the person that they've never met can feel engaged, protected, supported as a way to help this work. And there may be other ways that we can use our other volunteer boards and commissions to do that, or the Kiwanis, or the Rotary Club, et cetera. But that's just an idea that I had that I hope could be explored, and I wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
I love that idea. Emergency Manager Jared Snyder is part of our ongoing internal conversation. And CERT, both our CERT volunteers and our partners that are running resilience hubs around the city have already been tapped to be participants in whatever the ultimate, some of the ultimate initiatives, outgoing outward-facing initiatives, look like. So yeah, absolutely.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thanks. I have two questions. And I'm really, really, really happy that we're here. So thank you for the work that you've put into this. This is outstanding. First question is just, we can't be the only city in the region thinking about this. So I'm just curious how your conversations, what they've been like when you talk to other cities when we're engaged in this work. Is this something that other people are thinking about as well here?
Yes, they want us, well, they're thinking about it, and they're thinking, "Hey, Issaquah, figure it out and come tell us how to do it."
Of course, every time.
Yeah. In fact, you know, there was, there was an invitation, actually, to speak at a local city manager's conversation last month, and I had to say, "We're not quite ready to come and talk to you yet." And then, of course, we see some nonprofit and/or private initiatives. So I know in Seattle, there's a group called the Chamber of Connection. That's not, the city supports it, but it's not run by the city. I think one of the challenges with some of these programs is they're really seeking out the people who are already really actively looking for connection, and maybe not the folks that maybe most acutely need support. But still, a ton of great stuff to learn from them. Highly recommend checking out their website. They have a resource on sort of the six points of connection that they encourage every community member to have that overlaps big time with emergency. One of the first ones is, who's your neighbor? That's your sort of emergency touchpoint person. And so, learning a lot from, not just necessarily other jurisdictions, but other actors in the space. And then I would say internationally, there's a ton that cities are doing. A lot of it is around public infrastructure design. So you read about sort of like high-five zones. I know that's something that Robyn Spear and I have talked about, like what does a high-five zone along the Rainier Trail look like? Or as we're installing benches, you know, benches can be labeled as sort of conversation benches. So there are a lot of, Europe has a lot of ideas about how to build this, unsurprisingly. And so that's definitely entered a lot of the conversations we've been having.
Thank you. Yeah. And in my comments later, I have some book recommendations that include some of the things that you've mentioned. So, okay, good to know. And of course, everyone's looking for us to take that first step. Okay, interesting. Second question is around data. So it's really good, especially because we have to acknowledge, right, that this is a long problem. Like, this is a long-term solution. It's going to take a long time to really measure success here. And so measuring success, we need good metrics. Belonging, inclusion, loneliness, isolation, these are super-subjective things, right? It's very difficult to capture that. If someone feels like they don't, or that they do belong, maybe they also feel like they're lonely as well. And so like, that might have an impact on the data. Maybe someone feels like they don't belong, and so they don't answer the survey, and so our data's already skewed. How should we think about, like, measuring success in the long run? I'm curious what you think, since that's your mindset is always around that.
That's the other thing I think about all the time. Yeah, we had actually a really robust conversation about this today at the Community Action Group. Was sort of thinking about the different levels of, how are we going to know if we're succeeding? I do think we have to put some level of trust in the tools that we already have at our disposal. So, you know, we'll continue to ask those questions biennially on the survey, taking into account that we're going to miss people. Though I will say that when folks are dissatisfied, they tend to fill out surveys more often. But if you're, say, in a really difficult mental health crisis, you're not going to fill out that survey. And that's where we rely on our behavioral health data to get a better sense of who's truly in need, knowing that even with that, we're still missing folks. And so there's some questions around, one of the reasons why behavioral health data is one of the priorities for this year and shoring that data up is really to get a better sense of who are we missing? Because we're certainly missing folks. Super-subjective, right? We even talked a lot today about, you know, this idea of like, you feel that you belong. Different people have different thresholds for what that means for them. And different people want different things. We talked about, oh, should we be, how should we be asking folks at an event, you know, how should we be gathering data on the success of an event to engage and/or build connection when event-level success is really hard to determine? And so I think we are going to have to rely on long-term, sort of, long-term biennial survey-level indicators and trust that because those are questions that are asked regularly, you know, we replicated questions on the survey that have been asked in research nationally. Rather than trying to invent our own questions, we use the ones that we can then benchmark against, sort of, national data as well. So I think, I think there's still a lot of room. I guess my answer is, we're still thinking about it. We know we're going to use our community survey data. We know we're going to use our behavioral health data. And then there's some conversation happening already about what does event-level success look like and how would we measure that in the more immediate term.
Great, thank you.
Great questions. Okay, now that the race is over between Hall and Joe, who else would like to ask some questions before we kind of move into the comment? No? No, no? Okay, so, are you kidding?
No, I'm serious. I want to give everyone else a chance.
There you go.
Before going on, okay. So in terms of metrics for how to tell if an event is success, you know, Eventbrite has these metrics, the number of tickets sold.
Sure.
Was it?
Sure.
You know, how many people bought the product on the way out during the presentation, things like that.
Yep.
Do you know, you're the, our prime data person. Thank you so much for bringing everything to us. Are you aware of any kind of metrics that are for events that might be out there, just to follow up on the great question that my fellow councilmember had?
They're all kind of incomplete, right? They are asking similar questions, and we're not trying to sell anything. So it does get difficult. I also think about this a lot through the lens of my, being a former middle school teacher, where sort of the first way I would teach something, it'd maybe work for 50% of my class. And then I would try a slightly different tactic to teach the same thing, and it'd work for another 10%. And then I'd try another tactic, and it would work for the next maybe 20%. And at that point, you know, you've got the majority of your class, but you're still missing, you know, five kids. And for those five kids, they need one-on-one support. And so I think that's, we had a good conversation. Amy Duke's, our arts manager, is part of this group, and we talked a lot about how one of the ongoing performance measures we ask is about how many people participated in an arts-funded event. When we used to fund Concerts on the Green, it was thousands and thousands of people. And then we changed our strategy because we wanted to start funding smaller arts grantees, and that led to smaller numbers. But that doesn't necessarily mean it was less successful. You know, there's a quality/quantity aspect there. So I think, I love your question, it's something I'm going to look into, but it's also one of those things where we just have to accept there's no, there's probably not going to be a perfect measure, given the human nature of the challenge we're trying to address.
Absolutely, but if there is something that can find a good measure, I'm looking right at them right now. Thank you.
I'll be on the hunt.
The last question I had is, I spoke to a person that works with our Hispanic population. And they're not going to school, or if the kids are going to school, they're going late because they think that ice comes by in the morning usually. How are we thinking about connecting, when you say everyone in the community in that last 10% or what have you, how are we thinking about our immigrant communities in this kind of scenario in this project?
It came up today in our conversation. One of the questions that we entertained was sort of, what are the current challenges and barriers that folks are facing when it comes to overcoming loneliness and isolation? And one of the things that came up was current federal environment executive orders, the fear that a lot of things have struck into folks, folks' experience in everyday life. And so I know it's something our Human Services Team, which is well-represented, they're thinking a lot about that. But also, we had many providers in the meeting today that it's on their minds as well. So I don't have an answer currently, but it is currently something we're thinking about, what it means for our immigrant community, our newcomer community. Yeah.
Great. I really appreciate the deep dive you're taking on this issue, and I believe it's in good hands, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Looking for more questions, and if not, I'm just going to make Councilmember Joe go first. Councilmember Joe?
I am so glad that the mayor saw this as a concern and decided to put a plan into action. And as I said, I think we have the right personnel in the administration, you, working on this as the sole person that's kind of heading it. But you have brought to the table so many different people that are addressing it from so many different angles and directions, that I think the approach is great. I would encourage, again, trying to just find the things that we already have at our disposal in terms of our volunteers and the organization structure that we have, and how can we make those little extensions that can make a big difference? And I also appreciate that you realize that there's no one clear metric to determine success for this. And I hope that we're able to find success on many different levels so that our community will benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. Echoing thanks here. You know, I was worried that we just weren't going to have time to be able to fit this into the strategic plan when it came back for kind of our feedback, and of course, I had no reason to worry. I feel, I just want to say, like, I feel very heard. I remember bringing this up, and I was worried, so I feel very heard. Like, you've made immediate progress on this. There are community members that I work with every week that are very deep in this work, that also feel very heard. So thank you there. Some of you know, I've been on the board of a community-building organization here in Issaquah for five years. We studied the Surgeon General's report quite a bit in graduate school at the Evan School. So anyways, thank you, thank you very much, and I'm thrilled that we're here. At a high level, I think the vision and the mission statements hit the mark in terms of what we should be focused on, right? And focusing on like, what's actually in our wheelhouse of influence. I have a lot of kind of random thoughts I just want to throw out there. So, by the way, pro-connection lens, I love that, I wrote that down. So I love that that kind of, that's where we're headed, right? Is to have this lens that can be applied at every level here. So I love to see that, love to see the emphasis on empowering community leaders and organizations who are involved in this work today. Love the focus on activating public spaces to bring people together. Love the data. Couple other thoughts. There is a strong emphasis on mental health here, which is a really important part of this work, right? Don't get me wrong. And I, but I also recommend that our communications and our outreach focus on the benefits to physical health too, because those are plenty in the literature, right? Risk of stroke, risk of heart disease, risk of type 2 diabetes and dementia, the list goes on. So I just worry that, and I know it's not going to be like this, but I worry that if the focus is solely on mental health, you know, there are people who think, "Oh, mental health's not for me, I don't have to worry about that." Whether that's true or not, right? And so they might not think about this issue more in-depth as they should have. And then, of course, there are the other benefits, right? Like, getting more people civically engaged, the city benefits from that, of course. And then also living a more fulfilling life, right? That's an individual benefit as well. So just that there are a lot of different things to include in messaging. Already asked questions about data, so I'm just glad we're thinking really deeply and intentionally around how we're going to measure success here. I think that this Community Connection Action Group is a great idea. Bringing, you know, staff and community members together is good. I would just make sure everyone in that group has read the Surgeon General's warning and, okay, that's great. And kind of other writings on the subject. Like, I think too, it'd be interesting to even bring in like, subject matter experts. Like, is it possible to have speakers? Is it possible to have case studies from other communities across the country? And like, you mentioned Europe, I mean, there are case studies everywhere in Europe about this, right? So, I, you know, even, could this be an opportunity to bring in an Evans School student consulting team to help do a literature review for us or something like that? Another thought, you know, we're in a challenging time when it comes to budget, but I would love to see more of a focus on like, city investment in public spaces for connection as well. We do acknowledge, right, promoting and activating public spaces that we have right now. But I do think that we should be thinking about how upgrading and building new spaces fits into our long-term strategy. And I think that thinking seems like a short-term action, though I think giving the teams some space to, to figure out where that fits in our this biennium or next biennium thinking makes sense. Perhaps we just don't have the staff capacity or this action group capacity to be thinking about how even our CIP update this year aligns with our future investments in social connection, stuff like that. Anyways, I just wanted to throw that out there. Because one of the books I wanted to mention is called Palaces for the People. And if you haven't read this book, this is a really interesting one that talks about the importance of social infrastructure, but also just how the act of building new spaces or activating old spaces brings people together and makes people feel like there's actual data that shows that people feel like they're investing in them, not just like, oh, that neighborhood park on the corner. Like, oh, they actually care about us, I'm going to go there. So you go there for the ribbon cutting, whatever, and you meet someone you didn't know. So anyways, that's a good one. When it comes to outreach and, and events, which seems like is part of this first biennium, I feel like the people who already feel connected to community are going to be the first people to show up, right? So also just, number one, recognizing that. And then just knowing that we're going to need to be really intentional about how we reach out to community and put this front and center over the next couple of years. Maybe even these people who are already engaged, who show up to this, we turn these into like ambassadors on behalf of us, right? To like, go out and share out this messaging on our behalf, to bring more people to the next event. Your task is to bring three people to an event over the next year or something like that. Again, now I'm getting into programmatic stuff, but there's a lot of opportunity there. And then finally, I said this earlier, just an acknowledgement, right? This takes time, like lots of time and effort. The Surgeon General himself, even at the time in that report, even mentioned how like, this is going to take a long time, people working together across lots of different governments and nonprofit groups for a long time. So perhaps some sort of recognition of a kind of our long-term commitment in maybe the introduction of the action plan or, or something there could be helpful. So again, just super happy and pumped that we're being so intentional about this. And I think we're starting from a really, really good place. So thank you for all your work.
Great comments. Councilmember Jiang, I want to thank you for your email today. Kelly put a lot of information, including questions, comments, and suggestions in a lengthy email. And I believe you were able to connect with Dale after that. So if you want to summarize for our group here, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. Yes, and thanks Dale for reaching out early about it. Yeah, so I wanted to kind of go summarize my earlier points in my email and then also add on a couple of things that came up during our conversation. So first off, on the mission and vision, I think it's, you know, generally fine. But I think there should be an acknowledgement of, you know, the sense of belonging, social connections and community bonds. You know, what we're trying to do goes beyond that, right? Like civic engagement and bringing people together is, I mean, there's this paper called "Social Connection as a Public Health Adaptation to Extreme Heat Events." Basically, you know, if you feel connected to your community, then if, and there's studies where it's like, oh, you know, in different neighborhoods of Chicago where they experienced a heat wave, areas where people typically, you know, you'd see someone sitting out on their stoop. And then if you didn't see them one day, you'd go in and check on them, be like, oh, they, you know, suffered from extreme heat. And that's the kind of thing that we should kind of strive for in our community, where it's like neighbors checking on each other. I've also seen in Issaquah, there's definitely different neighborhoods that have more of that sense of community. Where I live in Tallahassee, they're, like, I honestly, I know my one next-door neighbor that lives like right next to me, and I don't, I don't really know anyone else. Like even, like, my friend, we knew each other before. Yeah, Chris, okay, I know you, but I've never seen you walking around in, when I'm walking around in the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm just saying, like, even though I know people in the neighborhood, it doesn't necessarily lend itself to, you know, just talking to people. Whereas I was at Issaquah Valley Elementary, just like hanging out in the field, and then just randomly started talking to this other couple who was there with their dog. And they like invited us over to their house. And that, and so that's kind of, you know, that's an area where just the culture of the place is more, you know, welcoming and lends itself more towards, you know, community. And how do we get that sense in different neighborhoods is something that, I don't know if that's something, I mean, I really don't know. And anyway, so getting back to my actual points. So I think another point on the mission statement was, I think it said, you know, the city will create social bonds or whatever. I think the job of the city is more to facilitate that through, you know, the work that we do and working with community groups. And then the one other piece on the mission statement or vision or whatever it was, was shared values and experiences. I think actually, one of the big problems we face is that we hang out too much with people who have the same values as us. And part of what we should do is, you know, figure out how to facilitate connections with people who might have different values and come from different backgrounds. But maybe it's like mutual understanding and shared experiences that can help bring people together. I think, so on the goal strategies and actions, Dale mentioned this earlier. You know, some of the people by definition who have the most social isolation are unlikely to be connected with existing groups. So how do we reach out to them proactively? I really liked the point that Councilmember Joe made about, you know, having cert volunteers, you know, reach out to people in the neighborhood. And that could be something that, you know, people could sign up to do. And another point was on Goal Four, there was something around third spaces. And I think the third spaces, what I found is that it actually goes beyond just what you would traditionally consider as a third space, like, you know, a brewery or a cafe, although those are really important. I think, you know, some of these like commercial spaces and small stores can actually be great places for community. For example, I used to go to this knitting group at the Nifty Knitter, and that was like a really great place. And so I think that gets back to what we were saying earlier about, you know, the importance of commercial spaces for a community and from a community connection perspective as well. But overall, I think this is definitely something that's really important, you know, for just quality of life in the city. It's not just, you know, the infrastructure and everything. It's do people feel like it's a nice place to live and they have, you know, their people around and their community? And I think there's only so much that, you know, the city government can do, right? I, like, I'm actually really hesitant as the city government to be like, hey, make sure you hang out with your friends because otherwise that's bad for your physical health and your mental health. I think that could come off as overly preachy, where it's like, hey, look, you know, there's all these fun things. And here's a story about how someone, you know, found connection through like city programming. I feel like, you know, more, more of those like inspiring messages could be better.
Thank you, Councilmember Jiang. Another one of my priorities this year is to learn from the lessons of the bomb cyclone. And so this whole thing about, these are all interconnected themes of making people feel like they can reach out when they need help or they have somebody to talk to when an emergency comes. So thank you for sharing. I believe it's Councilmember Ray, Council President, Deputy Council President.
Great, thank you. I'm going to start with, I really like the mission. And I particularly like pathways for community members to connect. And I want to put emphasis under the word pathways. And I think this goes to Councilmember Jiang's point about, it's about creating a path of least resistance and maybe not legislating. But I also am struck by belonging and wanting to belong various person-to-person. I have a sister, I actually have three of them, but I have one in particular who really likes her privacy a lot. She's, she's very private person. And so what would be belonging for her is very different than would be belonging for somebody else. And so that's the thing I keep binding up on a bit is, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's more of a salad bar, where there's a many things to choose from at the salad bar. Also agree with Councilmember Jiang on, I'm not sure it's government's role to legislate, thou shalt connect. But I think there are things we can do to facilitate. And I think there's things we can do to promote our businesses, to facilitate community connections. And I was, just went to flashing to Cheers, the TV show, maybe without the beer. But, but it really is a place where people, where everybody knows your name, right? That was their theme. And then I think our challenge is, are there things that we're doing that create barriers to connection? So it's, it's flipping it around and saying, yeah, 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 what can we do, what can we do? But what are we doing right now that we should stop doing, that, that create barriers? Love the phrase and the intent of the pro-connection lens, because I think that's, that's how we get value, is everybody in Issaquah City Government is doing their job and looking at the job they're doing through a pro-connection lens. So it's like the, the guy from Public Works who's coming out to check on my water meter has got a, you know, hey, looking for ways to connect me to other parts of my community.
That's a true story.
That is a true story. And then, of course, it's about community partnerships. And it's about supporting the efforts of the neighborhoods to create communities. And they're all trying to do that too, on their own scale. And some of the bigger neighborhoods, you know, like the villages, have more capacity than some of the smaller neighborhoods. And so what can we do to help them with maybe just a playbook about how do you engage your community? Because community starts small. Anyway, and then I think this came up earlier, loneliness is not limited to city boundaries. So it's probably can't be an Issaquah-only thing. So we got to look, look broader.
Those are, those are great comments. Kind of like the how to do business in Issaquah, right? What can we do for neighborhoods to help them with their connection strategies? Also, I'm sure you're not following me on Twitter, but I did post today about a restaurant that not only has the standard, Twitter? Okay, X, okay, X. The standard activities of trivia nights and karaoke. But they're planning a Mother's Day thing that starts with a walk. So it starts at their restaurant, it's a walk through the park, around the park, and ends up back at the restaurant on Mother's Day for some other festivities. And I thought adding those kinds of elements is what our business community can really step up in fantastic events. Council President and then Deputy Council President.
Thank you. I know it's late, so I'm not going to chime in and agree with everybody with specific points, but I do agree. Dale, I thought the data on the community survey really showed the huge decline in connectedness. Looking at it in 2021, it's easy to meet and connect with others in my neighborhood or the community. 59% agreed or strongly agreed. Now we're down to 43%. And that is a huge drop in only four years. Just a few things to highlight here. I have concerns about whether we can truly be successful here without, with the lack of city resources. I agree with Councilmember Hall that investment in spaces is an important element. And then really being able to create or facilitate the events that bring people together. I also agree that looking at other cities across the country and across Europe would provide some really good case studies. It really is those casual connections in those third spaces that Europe does so well that create that sense of belonging. And I do agree that businesses can be a huge part of this. You know, I think down to Renton has some areas on their beachfront that aren't just, you know, beach and boats, but also businesses down there. You can see the same thing in many of Europe's cities where they have small cafes in their parks that activate that space and encourage people to use it. And so I would say that we really shouldn't just be working with HOAs and community partners, but also looking at our businesses for ways that we can work together to activate those spaces and utilize it. We have a fantastic downtown. And being able to bring more people in there creates that idea and builds on this concept of belonging and inclusiveness, but also brings revenue to our businesses and sales tax to the city, which I think is a win in all kinds of areas, because then people who are belonging are also contributing in that way.
Deputy Council President?
Well, I'm, I'm really glad that we're tackling this. This is really an important and deep, deep issue. So I do belong to this little, little club here in town. And we are in the process of looking at our operations in total. And we did, recently did a SWAT project, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. We just did it a week and a half ago. Overwhelmingly, what are the strengths? It's the connection, it's the friendships, it's the camaraderie, it's the, the shared experiences and so forth. And yet, over and over, here's a group of people that really do feel connected. Over and over, they are saying, the old ways of fundraising don't work anymore. The old ways of recruiting members don't work, doesn't work anymore. The old ways of, you know, our traditions and some of the ways that we run meetings, and none of that works anymore. And so, and so we really are having to step back. We're having that, we're having that discussion starting Thursday morning. And, you know, really looking at things. So I would encourage us as a city to be doing the same things. Cell phones are not going to go away. Digital gaming is not going to go away. Zoom is not going to go away. And there's some other barriers that we are really unique to this time in our history. In that, a lot of it is the pressure of, of time itself. People don't have time to donate to projects and don't have time to get together. They feel very pressured, there's just this high intensity pressure going on. The fact that so many people that are in Issaquah have to commute, have long commutes, the people that go out every day have to have a long commute coming in, and then they don't have the time to participate. And there's all kinds of things that I think we need to identify. What are the barriers and what is unique to this time that is different from the way things have been done for years and years and decades? And maybe this group that's working together can tackle some of those bigger issues. And the fact that we are a very multicultural group as well, how do we go across those barriers? And really start talking to each other and bringing in people from all different kinds of backgrounds? So that's, that's one, that's one thing that I think would be very valuable. What is the role that the city could play in that? I think is creating that dialogue, the ability to step back and do a meta look at what's going on? And how can we be a leader in identifying new ways of bringing people in and engaging people? Okay, and then just from my, just a life lesson, sorry. I will play the older card right now, the older but better card. But just, you know, connection is a, like a byproduct. It's, it's like happiness. Happiness is not a goal. Happiness is a byproduct of a well-lived life, you know? Connection is a byproduct, to me, of purpose. And that is the word that I feel is missing from the, the mission. The city of Issaquah identifies and creates pathways for community members to connect and build a deeper sense of belonging through shared purpose, values, and experiences. So and a really good example of shared purposes are PTAs. They come together because they've all got kids in common. This is their purpose. You know, purpose could be teaching somebody how to do, to play a game. Or it could be helping, for a person, it doesn't have to be an altruistic purpose. It just has to be, what is the purpose of my engagement? And through that purpose, you connect with people. So I really think if we can identify purposes, and maybe when we have a purpose as a city, can we reach out to our community and say, can you engage with us in solving this problem? Or this purpose that the city has a need for? And that's, and then the people that come around that purpose, connect. And, you know, we hope. Because I totally agree, we can't mandate this. This is something that has to come from people's hearts. And, you know, their, their feeling of, this is some way that I can make a difference. So, okay, end of rant.
No, that was great. Zach, have you already had a chance to talk? I don't know that Councilmember Mertz has had a chance to talk. You're okay? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had to add, add one more thing. Because I also, I'm not calling anyone out here too. I also think that we shouldn't legislate thou shall, thou must connect, right? It just doesn't make sense to do this. But I also just don't, in the way we talk about it in the action plan and here, I want to make, and with the community, I want to make sure that we acknowledge the seriousness of this. This is a federally, like, a federal epidemic of loneliness. This is a public health emergency that has been designated by the federal government. Yeah, exactly. So I just want to make sure that...
So I just want to make sure that, that we're taking seriously that that is, like, we have to really mention that head-on as well, because it's very serious. Anyways, thanks.
Good. Any other comments? Councilmember Jiang, did you have something?
I just wanted to second all the points that Councilmember, sorry, Deputy Council President De Michele said around shared purpose. I mean, for me, you know, volunteer, just even seeing like the city volunteer days for Arbor Day or all the, you know, work parties that Issaquah Trails Club does where we plant trees or like rip out ivy, those are, I mean, to me, some of, it's, I mean, for me, as, you know, a part of a group that organize it, it's super rewarding to see people like meet each other from those events and, you know, as they come to those over and over again, you know, build a deeper connection. And I think those are the types of things where it's, you know, we're fulfilling the purpose of, you know, meeting our city's environmental sustainability goals, and also we get the byproduct of connection. So I think that goes to what Dale was saying about, you know, applying a community lens and, you know, getting volunteerism and getting folks to feel, because I think feeling connected to the community also, it's like you have to have some skin in the game of a community, right? You feel like you're invested in the community because you've spent your time and effort engaging in it.
Great comments. Did you get enough, or should we go on for another hour, Dale?
You know, as, I'm excited to ring in Midnight Together, but I, I think I have what I need. I heard overarching support for the plan with some, some great suggestions around some minor word changes that I think are really purposeful, activating and supporting businesses. I know I didn't say businesses explicitly, absolutely invite it. The Chamber, DIA, Visit Issaquah have all been on the list served to be invited to our ongoing Community Action Group. And I really love this push on whether we call it a SWOT analysis or we just get real about the question of what are we currently doing that might actually be creating barriers?
Yes.
And get real with ourselves about how we might need to change some of the ways that we're doing what we're doing to, even if we've done it for a long time, to better promote connection amongst our ever-changing community. So, thank you.
And great example on that was street parties, when communities wanted to have street parties, we had a lot of rules in place, but the team did a really good job revisiting that a few years ago. It should be easy to have a neighborhood party, super easy. Well, thank you, Dale. Great presentation, fabulous conversation. We are now moving into...
Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Council, Council. City Administrator Buckwitz.
The hour is late, we have one final item, we'd be happy to put that on a future meeting if you'd like.
It's, it's not time-sensitive. The councils all nodding that we will not do our AB 9009 tonight and move into committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Jiang.
I don't have any report today.
Go ahead, Councilmember Joe.
Madam Mayor, thank you. The LTAC Committee had a meeting this afternoon, and we covered a number of topics. We had a great meeting with Visit Issaquah and talking about the program that they're doing, particularly in getting ready for the FIFA World Cup in '26, starting to talk about that. There are a lot of rules and regulations that are associated with it that we'll have to adhere to, but the conversation's been interesting in terms of what we can innovate and do here in Issaquah that might make it a shared experience for, for everybody. We're also talking about creating a reserve fund, or at least having a certain amount in reserve to handle additional drawbacks and funding from other sources and any kind of future pandemic-type situation in the future. So just an interesting conversation there going forward. As you know, I'm the liaison for the Chamber of Commerce Board, they are going to be doing a training for new board members, so they have canceled our presentation to them for the next meeting on May 16th. May 14th, the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee is scheduled to meet, there hasn't been an agenda set, but please keep an eye out for that. Cascade Water Alliance quickly, the Public Affairs Committee for May 7th was canceled, but the May 28th Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting is still being held, 3:30 in the afternoon, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, a couple of quick ones. So our next Planning Development and Environment Committee meeting is tomorrow, and our only item on the agenda is our first touch with the CIP. So that's that. Eastside Fire and Rescue, our next board meeting is this Thursday. We actually have a packed agenda. We've got some engineering promotions to start us off. Our annual awards banquet is usually at the Snoqualmie Casino, not this year because they're, they've got construction of the new hotel there, and so it will be here at the board meeting. So there will be quite a few people present at the beginning. Council President Walsh, I know you're going to be joining, so I would recommend that we get there a little early, but there will be spots, reserved spots for us. Anyway, so once that's finished, we'll get updates on fire chief recruitment and changes to our ILA that should help us with debt financing for apparatus. We're going to have an update to our board policies that would allow for advisory seats for contract cities. So we'll be voting on them then, so if you have any questions or any thoughts about that, please be sure to reach out to us before Thursday. And we haven't asked you some equipment replacement fund dollars that came in from surpressing old vehicles on updating the suspension of our reserve ladder truck, right? So EFER operates two ladder trucks, we have one in Issaquah, we have one in reserve, the one in reserve suspension is kind of shot, we've been trying some things for quite a long time, we just need to invest like $30,000 in it. So we're going to use some surplus funds for that. So that's EFER, and then the Public Safety Civic Facilities Task Force is this Thursday, and we are going to break down the community survey results, so that's going to be fun. And then we have kind of a priorities discussion and exercise. In our last meeting, we talked about kind of visualizing what city hall space needs would look, look like. So anyways, we're, we're starting to move along there, and that concludes my report.
I love task forces. Okay, Councilmember Ray.
No report this evening.
Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, May 14th. There's going to be a couple of discussions, but there's no planned action, which is good because neither of Issaquah's reps will be able to be there.
Oh, that's right.
But I will review the minutes when they are published and see if there's anything that I should report back to council when I get back. Services Safety and Parks met on Tuesday, April 29th. We got a great presentation from Jen Davis Hayes on economic development metrics. It led to a really good conversation. Councilmember Ray and Deputy Council President De Michele had really dug in some really good questions with Jen, so I would encourage everybody to take a look at that video. I don't often say that with Services Safety and Parks, I usually say, well, we'll, we'll do the heavy lifting on some stuff and we'll just come back and report, but it was a really, it was a really illuminating conversation about economic development in the city.
Wow.
This concludes my report.
One book recommendation, one video recommendation. Awesome. Good homework. Deputy Council President.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. No report tonight. Eastside Human Services Forum meets this Thursday, and Eastside Transportation Partnership is meeting on Friday.
Fantastic. Council President.
Thank you. Both my regional committees met last Thursday, May 1st. King County Affordable Housing Committee, we continued our discussion around the committee structure, how we fit in under GMPC, whether we want to be land use or some sort of financial capacity, still trying to figure out where our heart is. And then Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board, we went through and reviewed and recommended certification for 14 different cities' comp plans. We also discussed what they're calling a new missing middle, which is the disappearance of moderate-sized housing and ownership houses. And so they're presenting another potential problem for us to discuss, and that concludes my report.
Thanks. For the mayor's report this evening, there will not be an executive session. I just wanted to mention quickly a couple of upcoming events. So there's a fresh flower market this weekend, going to open at the Historic Shell Station, where you can select bouquets to celebrate spring. The fresh flowers are from Leah's Garden, and it's available from 9 to 2 both Saturday and Sunday. And if you don't know, the farmer's market's already open. Great statistics shared with you all this evening. So stop by the Pickering Barn every Saturday, 9 to 2, for your selection of local products and products. It's going to be running through September 27th, rain or shine. And Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebration, so join in on the celebration of the Asian American and Pacific Islander Community hosted by The Circle this Saturday, May 10th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be hands-on activities for the whole family to enjoy, including a paper-cutting art workshop by Mary Wang. Don't forget to try all of the delicious snacks available. It's a free event, it's open to all at the Issaquah Community Center, and you can register for free, for tickets, for free at The Circle's website. Moving into the Good of the Order, I do have a couple of meetings, and does any, I have one quick item, does anybody have any items for Good of the Order? Council President.
Just wanted to remind you to check your emails. Deputy Council President De Michele, like last week, somewhere around there, sent an email about board and commission thank yous and signing up for particular meetings, and so just looking through, figuring out when you might be available to join one of those meetings and thank our dedicated volunteer board and commission members.
That's great. Just wanted to tell the group here tonight that Deputy Council President's going to be hosting this meeting with our human services providers in town. It'll be the second convening we've had. We're collecting information that we can share with our state, so county, state, and federal partners to let them know what is happening within the system of care and the damaging impacts so far, but also what is expected. We're quite concerned that this network that people rely on for these, these basic human services needs is, is really going to struggle in the next two quarters, and some may disappear. So we're collecting that information, and we're going to be sharing it with elected officials, and also back with the, the group, just to understand exactly what is happening in this group. And I really appreciate Councilmember Joe and Deputy Council President De Michele for wanting to do these kinds of check-ins, they're great. So a couple of meetings coming up, the, well, first, the Buddhist holiday, Vesak, is next Monday, so next week's committee of the whole meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 13th instead. The anticipated agenda items will include the community survey, jail operations, financial analysis, informational update, 2024 citywide performance measures. And on Monday, May 19th, 2025, there is a city council meeting with anticipated agenda items, including the sewer plan adoption and middle housing draft regulations. There is no executive session this evening, so we are adjourned at 10:23. Great meeting.